Make sure all the microphones are on. And if you'll please join me first in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item from business is a proclamation. So Lyle, you can come forward. Chris, if you can come forward too. We're gonna have a proclamation for Lyle. Chris has been part of this for eighteen and a half years. Appreciate her support. Appreciate everything Lyle's done. And this proclamation will also include designation of the 21st of February as Lyle Butler Day. And as most of you know, he'll have a ability to meet and greet you down at the convention center starting in four in the afternoon. So hopefully everybody can get by and see him without enough room or not enough food or anything. Hopefully not. Just like to say a couple of things of a person nature. I've known Lyle for a long time, not as long as many of you know. I've come and gone over the years since 1990. But finding a person like Lyle to bear a deed to come to a community and stay with it for so long, it makes such a great contribution. You don't find people who can build teams the way he does, to be discreet the way he has, and to continue to build this community. The numbers of things that have been accomplished under his watch, obviously have been done by teams of people, teams of caring citizens, volunteers and others. But at the center of that, it always takes somebody who has the vision and who can bring people to do it together to make these kinds of things happen. There's a lot of great ideas, but ideas need power behind them to come true. And Lyle has done that over and over again. We're just fortunate that he and Chris are going to stay here because he doesn't get off this easy. When he retires here formally, we're gonna continue to call on him. So Chris hopefully will not keep it too short. We're gonna need you. So Gary, if you will, please read your...
Sure, happy to. Whereas Lyle Butler has served as President and CEO of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce since July of 2000, he has played a significant role in enhancing economic development initiatives and was an advocate for existing businesses and business expansion and retention, as well as bringing new businesses to the Manhattan region. Whereas he fostered a collaborative and professional relationship with the city of Manhattan and with local and regional stakeholders, as well as championed the annual Flynn Hills Regional Leaders Retreat and Advantage Manhattan campaigns. Whereas he contributed to the key initiatives, including downtown redevelopment, the relocation of the National Bio and Agro Defense Facility, Manhattan Conference Center, Manhattan Knowledge-Based Economic Development, and bringing the Big Red One back to Fort Riley. Now therefore, Michael Dodson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas proclaims Thursday, February 21 as Lyle Butler Day to express our appreciation on a remarkable career and to congratulate him on his retirement. On behalf of the citizens of Manhattan, we look forward to Mr. Butler's continued involvement to make the Manhattan region a great place to live, work, learn, play, and retire too.
Wow, eighteen years has gone quick. I just simply want to say three things maybe, if I can, or thank three things. First, Mayor and City Commissioners, after eighteen years in working with not just you but others that have become before you, I know you all are committed to making Manhattan a better place. And so it's an honor for the Chamber and the business community to be able to work with all of you. And we have and we will continue to do that. It's very, very important that this partnership continues because it is unique among cities to have a great partnership between the university, Fort Riley, the city, and the business community. And that's what makes Manhattan a great place. So thank you Commissioners. I'd also like to thank city staff. First few days I was here, Ron was here. I've worked with Jason for a long time, Bernie, a lot of folks that are in this room. And the one thing that I can say to the citizens is that it's been always a professional staff that has been willing to at least listen from the business community and take our ideas and thoughts. So I appreciate it, Ron representing the staff, Gary, so many great people that it's Robert Ott. There's just lots and lots and lots of folks that we work with very closely. My staff is all here tonight. And the reason they're here, they told me, is not to get this, but they were hoping that I'll call work off tomorrow. So that's why they all came out tonight, say, hey, we're all here tonight. I also have some board members and Wayne Sloan, our current Board Chair. They're all great supporters and like to do this. And finally, my wife. She complains to, I think she's complained to all of you up here at some point and all the previous City Commissioners, when you have City Commission meetings on Valentine's Day and other major events. And my wife says, why are you going down there? Why are they meeting? I'm gonna let you all answer that question because I have not. But it has been a pleasure. And I intend to, my wife and I both, to stay in the community and to be involved, to continue to make Manhattan a great place. Thank you.
I think Chris said that for eighteen and a half years, Lyle has been down here with the City Commission every Tuesday night. So hopefully that we can face.
Now she won't know what to do on Tuesday night. We'll have to think of something. All right. Thank you again, Mayor and City Staff and all the City Commissioners. Greatly appreciated. Very much.
Our viewership's going down, Jason. All right, we'll go to item number three, which is Commissioner Comments. And we'll see if any of the Commissioners have a comment that they wish to make.
Just to reiterate, Lyle Butler Day on February 21st, so the whole community can come together and wish him well in retirement. The Chamber, of course, has hired a new Chamber Executive Director. His name is Jason Smith. And I had the opportunity to meet with him the other night at an event and visit with him. And I believe that you will all be pleased with his leadership in the future. That doesn't mean that we don't wish Lyle a wonderful retirement. So, thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick. Lyle wasn't lying when he said that Chris had probably complained to all of us before. The very first time I met her was at a Chamber event, and it was right after our 2:00 AM meeting, shortly after I got sworn in. And she just said, it was nice to meet you. That 2:00 AM meeting was something, wasn't it? With kind of annoyed tone. She was like, hopefully we can get the rules changed. And I said, I agreed. So it's been a pleasure to get to know and work with both of them the last few years. The only other thing that I wanted to say is, obviously, the Kansas Legislature is in full swing. Pay attention, the deadline to file bills was just within the last few days. I was reading an article this morning that over 300 bills got submitted in the last week. So there's a lot of things, a lot of those committees that are working on, that affect what's happening here in the city of Manhattan. Some of those, the Commission will weigh in on. So I would just encourage you all to pay attention as well because we're in the grind time where the legislature has to start actually voting on things and making decisions. So, that's all I had.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Jared Wessinger over there for running the Snow Partners Program for the city. We may get some more snow tonight. And he's been orchestrating all the volunteers that have signed up to help those that are unable to remove the snow from the sidewalks and right of ways as required. We had more people sign up this year than volunteers. So if any of you out there have a snow blower you want to use a little bit longer or some extra snow shovels, give them a call. We need some more volunteers to make the program more effective.
I just might add that we owe a lot of thanks to the street crews and thanks Brian for their leadership on that. They, as you might know, we have a pretty good reputation compared to other cities for keeping the streets clear and getting treatment on them before the fact. So just exercise patience. We're gonna get another dose tonight, maybe up to, I guess the latest is five inches by four or five in the morning. So just everybody drive carefully. And I think the guys will do a great job getting that off tonight. But in the past, we've had to keep guys on a long time. And they're so dedicated, they just get the thing done and then they go home. So hopefully tonight will be a little easier, but not much. So we'll turn now to item four, which is the Consent Agenda. And the Consent Agenda are those items of housekeeping nature, are those that the Commission has considered before and are now up, they group them together and we pass them or not together. And any Commissioner has the option of highlighting one of those, and we can discuss that in more detail or move it to the end of the agenda. So at this time, I'd call for any discussion on the Consent Agenda.
Mayor, with regard to item D, which is the sale of the city parking lot in Aggieville a year ago at this time, I voted no, just because I didn't think that the gem should be sold first. And I still think that. And so I'll be voting no on item D.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Any public comment on the Consent Agenda, please? Anyone wishing to speak can come forward. If you would, just sign in. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and ask for a motion on the Consent Agenda.
I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Gary, will you call the roll?
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes, on all but item D.
Motion carries four to zero with the exception of item D, which carries three to one.
We'll now move to item five, which is a public hearing on special assessments, and will be presented by Bernie Hay and our Director of Finance. Bernie?
Actually Commissioner, I am, or Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm really excited. I have Rena Neal here, who is City Controller and the, I think, known across Manhattan as the Special Assessment Guru. And she's gonna make the presentation. I want to tell you that prior to the meeting, I think it was the Lewises, that had questions about their assessment. And I can tell you that Rena is not only knowledgeable, but probably one of the most gracious, polite people that you'll ever meet. So Rena, thank you for taking this item.
Good evening, everyone. Today we are here to talk about the special assessments for the May 2019 bond series. And this is our public hearing. So to begin, the city sells bonds twice a year, normally in May and November. Because of our delay in our cancellation of our January 22nd meeting, we're gonna sell our bonds this year in June instead. However, in May, we always include our special assessment projects to be bonded. And so this year, we have 22 projects that will bond. The benefit districts were created by a petition that were submitted by various developers and owners, and then the resolutions were approved by the City Commission. On January 29th, the City Commission set today as the date to hold the public hearing. And then an ordinance levying special assessments against the benefiting properties has been presented in the packet. And so it's a very detailed document that gets filed with the Register of Deeds, but it lists out all the properties that will benefit from the assessments and their proportionate share of those costs. All property owners were notified by letter about the amount and purpose of their assessment. And then the notice of public hearing was published in the Manhattan Mercury. So our public hearing, the purpose of the public hearing is to hear questions or objections from property owners concerning their assessments. We have received five calls regarding the letters and the special assessment process in general, and we have received no calls regarding the calculation or any technical issues regarding the assessments. We did have the couple that came in this evening that had questions about their assessments, and I do believe I helped them and answered their questions. So in terms of our costs related to this particular bond issue, the total cost is $10,311,211. And of that, the city at large is $1,347,90. And the benefit district is $8,964,121. To date, we have had some property owners who have chose to pay off their special assessments. And so then that brings our net bond amount currently to $10,234,531. Of that amount, $1,350,000 will be related to the city at large, which is for our Miller Parkway project. And then the special assessment portion is $8,885,000, for a total of $10,235,000. We round to the nearest $5,000 denomination when we sell our bonds. The map is not very clear. It's kind of small. But in terms of the benefiting properties, these are the locations within the city. And we have Walters, Walter's Row, Courtyards at Lee Mill Heights, Grand Bluffs at Miller Point, Unit 4, Lee Mill Heights, Unit 10, Miller Parkway, Scenic Drive Intersection, Muirfield Edition, Phase 2 Sewer, as well as the other Muirfield Edition properties, and then Landscaping Improvement, Olympic Edition, and Scenic Crossing. For all of those that are listed, except for Scenic Crossing and Muirfield Edition and Miller Parkway, all of the benefiting properties share on an equal share per lot basis, and 100% is to the city at large, except for Miller Parkway. And in your packet, you got information about the Miller Parkway improvements. They were related to the Roundabout in that area. Also, those improvements were based on a lineal foot confronting Miller Parkway. And so within that particular subdivision area, those particular subdivisions that actually benefited, they also received on an equal share per lot. So for instance, Lee Mill Heights, Unit 10, they received 13% of the benefit district portion of that particular improvement. So our next steps, we will have the second reading of the Special Assessment Ordinance on March 5th. And then the property owners will receive a second letter, which gives them the opportunity to pay their assessments in full by April 5th. If not paid, the assessments will be bonded in June and amortized over 20 years. And our bond sale will be June 4th, 2019. Again, that is because of our cancellation of the January 22nd meeting. And then the assessments will appear on the November 2019 tax statements. That's all. Any questions?
Oh, Commissioner, questions or comments?
I had the opportunity to ask Ron Fear yesterday this question, and that is that some of the subdivisions have stormwater and some of them don't. And I didn't understand why they all don't have stormwater assessments.
Commissioner, if I could just jump in here, Rena, if that's okay? Sorry to interrupt you.
She's relieved.
Typically, the stormwater portion would be for detention pond. Some of those subdivisions in Grand Muir actually had a master plan that had or region-wide detention instead of individual subdivisions. So some of those that you're seeing that don't have stormwater are probably related to the master plan in Grand Muir that built the detention ponds in the early 2000s.
Okay, thanks. That wasn't the same answer. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. All right.
Did you want to talk a little bit more about the city's interest there on that intersection, maybe?
Sure, we can do that. The assessment to the city at large is predominantly with Miller Parkway. Miller Parkway crossed a pretty significant area. It also has the traffic signals that were installed at Scenic Drive and Miller Parkway assessed to that. But there were some rural properties that weren't ripe for development. Therefore, it was not appropriate for us to assess them. One of the properties also did grant additional right of way to the city, which was a benefit to the city in that regard. We didn't have to purchase that additional right of way. The other property which, and that property was not real likely to develop due to the terrain. The other property which could develop in the future, we have a, I don't know if a covenant's the right word, but I think it probably is, is a provision that if it ever does develop, that they'll have to pay a connection fee to connect to Miller Parkway in the future, which would be similar to the cost of the assessments that the city is paying on their behalf.
Any other Commissioner comments or... All right, if you'll wait just a minute, let me ask if there are any public comments on this. Actually, what we have to do is open a public hearing, and now we'll ask for any public comment on this hearing item. So if you have a comment or a question, just please come forward and ask your question. Be happy to hear them. All right, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. And again, ask if there's any Commissioner comments. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I think we've known that, you know, we stack them up for about six months, and then we have one of these motions and proposals that bundles them up together, and we get a better bond rating, rate, interest rate. So that would be my own comment. I would be glad to make the motion that we approve the first reading of an ordinance levying special assessments against the benefiting properties in the following 22 projects, which have been completed. Baltrisol, Balter's Row, Edition Sanitary Sewer, SS 1514, Street, ST 1514, and Water, WA 1516. The Courtyards at Lee Mill Heights, Sanitary Sewer, SS 1516, Street, ST 1515, and Water, WA 1518. Grand Bluffs at Mill Point Edition, Unit 4, Sanitary Sewer, SS 1517, Street, ST 1516, and Water, WA 1520. Lee Mill Heights, Unit 10, Sanitary Sewer, SS 1512, Street, ST 1509, Water, WA 1512, and Stormwater, SM 1513. Miller Parkway and Scenic Drive Intersection, Street, ST 1512, Muirfield Edition, Landscaping, SP 1614, Sanitary Sewer, SS 1418, Street, ST 1423, and Water, WA 1416. Olympic Edition, Sanitary Sewer, SS 1415, Street, ST 1418, and Water, WA 1413, and Scenic Crossing Edition, Stormwater, SM 1511.
Think you deserve an award for reading that.
I didn't realize what I was in for.
I'll suck it.
I have a question. Do I have to read the STs and the WA's? I do. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Gary, call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
And Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. We now move to portion six, which is the general agenda. And the first one is consider the first reading of an ordinance annexing and rezoning the Blueville Edition, Unit 2, from Riley County AG, Agriculture District to C2 Neighborhood Shopping District. And the presenter will be Chad Bungar, Assistant Director of Community Development. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, Chad Bungar with the Community Development Department, and providing an overview of this item. The annex and rezone a portion on the west side of the city. For context, the extreme west side near the intersection of Kimball Avenue and Scenic Drive. More specifically, this area is to be annexed. Currently, it sits in rural Riley County. And then in one form or fashion, rezone the area outlined here. It's a little odd in that the owner had an option and has acquired essentially the leftover right of way that we have not used with the Roundabout. This is currently a travel easement of sort to the public. And so they are developing a lot on the east side of Scenic Drive. All this is to be included into the Blueville Edition, Unit 2 subdivision, which will be a commercial subdivision. The Lot 1 of the subdivision, nearest the intersection there, is already zoned C5. It will be slightly modified in terms of the zoning district to accommodate the subdivision layout. And the remaining area, including the right of way portion, will be rezoned to C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center. I have a plat for you, the preliminary plat for you to look at, to reference, but the items before you this evening are just the annexation and rezoning. The item, or the site, is within the Manhattan Urban Service Area. It has some placeholders, if you will, for public open space at the south. This is agriculture. And then the general notation of a neighborhood shopping center because of its significant intersection, near being, near the significant intersection of Kimball, Scenic, and Anderson. Flood plain, I would assume, is a concern. It is for most people along Wildcat Creek. As you can see, only the extreme southern portion of the subdivision is within the flood plain, mapped flood plain boundaries, either the FEMA or the community flood plain. The remaining site is in a low to moderate area flood zone. You have the staff recommendations for the annexation, as well as staff recommendation for the rezonings. The planning board heard this item two weeks ago and recommended approval for both items, as well as approved the preliminary plat. And city administration would recommend to you this evening to follow that recommendation and approve the annexation and rezonings based on the staff report. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just to make it a little more clear maybe for everybody, we annexed a piece of this property under discussion for zoning earlier. So now we're gonna annex an additional portion and then rezone both of those annexed pieces. And the other one you might mention is the, this had the road in it too, where we're going to move the Wildcat Creek Road slightly north to realign with the Cumberland Road that will go to the south of Stone Creek Physicians.
That is correct. I have the rough layout, if you will, from the preliminary plat here. As you mentioned, today, Wildcat Creek Road travels in generally a straight line east-west, tees into Scenic Drive. We'll realign that through this preliminary plat, or through this plating process to better align with this intersection further to the north. Again, not part of this action before you, but definitely part of the development project.
And just so everybody knows, we'll also be considering, when you look just a little bit north of where he's traced... bit north of where he's traced Wildcat Creek Road, there's a track A and a track B and a lot eight down there, and that's where he showed the, that the incursion of a hundred-year flood. And they've got two detention ponds in the plan down there that we'll be considering later, but it is in the plan. That's correct, isn't it?
Yes, you bet.
This is more of a process question. This is the, we talked about the floodplain. This is the first rezoning, rezoning thing that's come before me that didn't have some kind of prevention of runoff, I guess, since the time I've been on. So how, how is, you showed where the floodplain is, the 1% and the 1% future conditions. We as a commission, as we're making decisions on these one at a time, how are we supposed to assess? All of those things added up eventually are going to have a runoff effect, maybe by themselves they won't, but eventually added up they will. So is that where we have to pay attention to the future conditions? Or is there something that you're doing on your end to make sure that we don't approve 10 of these without realizing the effect that it's going to have on the creek in various places?
Definitely. That's a great question. Brian, step in if I say something wrong or jump in ahead of me, but with the preliminary plat, we have a drainage study that Brian and his staff reviews to ensure that our standards are met. The biggest one is pre versus post, so that farm ground today, the rate of runoff created after the development isn't greater. There'll be more drops of rain that'll most likely make its way into the creek, but not at a faster rate or more of a rate. So that goes with the preliminary plat. The planning, the city commission, or excuse me, city staff reviews that, makes some conditions if needed, reviews the drainage study, the plans for the ponds and whatnot, and then the planning board reviews that and recommends approval if it meets that. The conditions, the future conditions element with the floodplain is really built there to accommodate for this future growth throughout the watershed. And so it's factored in that the, this field would become a development, and the, you know, the grasslands to the south of there that's vacant now would become development, and it factors in that amount of water that makes into the creek.
So I guess, I guess that was, I think you answered my question, but I want to make sure that I understand it right. So essentially, moving forward, part of the reason why I asked that is, does this, do these projects added up change the future conditions at all? And from what it sounds like, it's, if there's going to be more runoff you find from the drainage study, you're going to present compensating factors for that when we do these things.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I need to thank you.
You bet.
Chad, I do have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
With regard to the Labor Day flood?
Mm-hmm.
Can you show us where the water line was in that flood?
I don't, I'd have to do some digging with pictures. Generally speaking, it would probably be in between the yellow and the blue. Maybe the applicant or the property owner would have a better sense of that. I didn't get out to this area, but generally speaking, where my map cursor is, would be my guess.
Would you, in the future, would you come prepared with that information?
Sure could.
On development that you're going to bring before us? Because that's something we're going to want to know, it seems. I mean, after the flood of 93, we pretty much set the water line out there as the boundary for, we weren't going to accept new development in that area. And it seems to me that, unless we're going to start building on stilts or something, that, and seeing what happened to the Plaza West development and some of those things, we need to be paying really good attention.
As we are, with the staff, so, for sure.
The, maybe just to add on there, when I went down there fairly, maybe 10:30 or so in the morning, if you know, back the south end of Stone Creek Physicians, the water from that, where it came across behind there, of course, didn't reach the building, so I think Chad is essentially correct. If you go from the right side there back to the left, on the left side, it was probably, as he said, somewhere close to that yellow arc that goes through there.
I know, I just know that there's a tendency to push things as far as you can, and in development, in the development world. And I just want to know literally where that line is when we talk about these proposals.
The line is, yeah, the line, I think we'll be in better shape to address where the line might be once we do the dynamic analysis, because then you'll be able to alter the flow rate and see what happens to the, to the, how far it goes outside of the banks, depending on how much water comes down, how fast. Because right now, the only experience we have was the last event.
Yeah, we'll get some better, I guess, tools here after we hire a contractor to do that, but, you know, we're not approving any building, just the annexing tonight. And of course, my feeling on this, I'm sort of draconian on this flood thing, because I think we just aren't hard enough. I don't want to see anything built in that yellow. And that's where I'm at right now, unless I see something else there, the yellow area, we shouldn't be putting any filled dirt in there or any buildings, because for sure, that's probably going to make it worse.
Well, and remember, with our floodplain regulations, we don't have a prohibition of building in the floodplain, even the blue area. But what we do is make sure those buildings are built high enough to protect them from today's FEMA flood, as well as our future flooding. But then we also have regulated compensatory storage. So basically, once you get to a threshold of size, which this would meet, every shovel full of dirt you bring into that floodplain, you have to shovel out 1.2 shovels. So we're compensating, actually improving the amount of flood storage. So we've tried to factor those in, we've tried to be cognizant that we need to protect ourselves from today's flood, as well as next, the next flood, as, both for the development and up and downstream, and still be able to develop in one form or fashion. So we have those factors racked, layered in, we haven't done a prohibition, so it's kind of caution, yawn, blanket prohibition of things.
Yeah, but we've got, you know, we've got another group, you know, working on this, and of course, I've made clear, I'm pretty draconian on what we need to do.
Sure.
And, you know, we made some mistakes in the past that we can't go back and fix, and it's time to, you know, say, stop. Don't build in the floodplain or the projected floodplain, because all it's going to do is displace the water onto somebody else. Even if you protect the building you're building, it's going to hurt somebody else farther on. So I just want to make clear that's where I am on that. So don't surprise anybody.
And I, my concern is the members of the public that we negatively impact with a flood. And there are a lot more of them than there are even in this room tonight. So there's a scale that we have to try to go by. With regard to the drainage report, this says that there are 40 acres, and only 17 acres are in the drainage report, that we're moving from ag to impervious surface, which would be the north part, obviously, and not down in the flood area. But the drainage report, at least in my materials, was only two pages. We didn't get to see the rest of it. It was just page one and page two. And I think that the city staff reworded it later in the report, but I just was interested in actually seeing the consultant's report. Are there any road improvements to Scenic Drive or Anderson required as an expense to the city? Are we going to be paying for any? For instance, Scenic Drive was just...
So I want to be real clear here, we're not talking about the preliminary plat. This is only the annexation and subdivi, annexation and rezoning. I don't mean to cut you off or be rude, Commissioner, but the plat is not a purview of the city commission.
I'm just talking about the drainage report. I haven't seen the plat that I've...
Right, even the drainage report, which is not the purview of the commission, so I...
So that's associated with the preliminary plat?
Correct, yes.
So when it comes through again?
With the final plat, will be before you to accept the easements and rights-of-way.
Which will be too late to have any impact on it.
I can assure you, though, that the city staff and the planning board has reviewed that drainage report, and it meets our standards, and within the confines of what we can do with it, it will be safe.
So Commissioner, a drainage report typically would be...
Who's talking?
Me.
Excuse me.
The drainage report typically would be 50 to 100 pages. This one was in that range, I don't remember the exact number. It was dozens of pages. In those dozens of pages, though, there's a whole ton, yeah, right there it is. There's a whole bunch of modeling efforts in the back of it. We, our staff, what we do, we go through those 200-page reports, we narrow it down to two or three pages in a memo of, these are the highlights, these are how they're meeting their requirements. You know, that's a 300-page report. If you have some insomnia, we'd be happy to give you that, and you could read through it.
I mean, it's not something I can take in a short amount of time, and I might not understand the modeling part either.
Yeah.
We have to consider that.
Yes.
What might be helpful if, maybe Ron, or you can do it, but we're now, it's been through the planning board, now it's to us, and then there's some more subsequent steps, so maybe you can just talk through that, so we know kind of what's going on next, and when it comes back to us, and what form.
Sure. So this process of annexation and rezoning are, Katie, I just blanked on it, what's the word I'm looking for? Legislative, that you have the discretion to approve or not based on the standards, whereas the plating process and administrative, that it has to meet our standards in terms of layout and design, and design standards, and if it does, then it essentially has to be approved by the planning board. The subdivision process is, is a planning board only function for the most part. So they review the plat's layout, the drainage, the traffic, those sort of things, and approves those. This one just happens to be going with the annexation and rezoning, so you have the ability to review those and make your decisions on if to annex and if to rezone based on the standards there. If that's done, and at the time that the developer's ready to go, he'll submit a final plat, which basically staff will review to the, make sure it meets all the, it's in general conformance with the layout of the plat, so they're not changing something wildly. You know, one street goes north and south here, and next time it goes east-west or whatever. And the lots are the same size, et cetera. Generally, the same plat. And then they will, again, if it meets our standards for layout of subdivision, they will approve that plat and bring that plat then before you to accept its easements and rights-of-way. So in terms of your functions as a city commission, you can accept easement, or excuse me, accept the recommendation and approve the annexation and rezonings, and then from there, accept the easements and rights-of-way of the final plat. So hopefully that...
I would just add that the, so sometimes you just get an annexation request. So the issue of annexation is totally discretionary by the commission, but if you annex it, you're obligated to rezone it. And the rezoning process has the conditions of approval, and then it moves back to the planning board.
I wanted to ask about Wildcat Creek Road. And as we approve the redesign, is that part of the Transportation Development District? Will that pay for that too? Or is that just Anderson?
Commissioner, Wildcat Creek Road would be part of the subdivision, and there'd be special, I would assume, a benefit district that would come forth for that. If the transportation impact study indicated it needed to be a three-lane, then that three-lane would be included in that benefit district, or if it was a two-lane, everything you see from that west property line over to Scenic would be part of that. We also went to the county and talked to the county board about this, because it is actually a county road now. They were in favor of it, and they appreciated the plan and the input.
So we would be annexing Wildcat Creek Road also?
For that short piece, yes.
Yeah, right. And is the, what will the elevation of that be? Will it be subject to flooding, like the current Wildcat Creek Road, or will it be elevated significantly?
We have not seen engineering plans on that yet.
Okay.
I guess I would defer to the consultant, I doubt they've looked at it yet. Typically, it would be raised in elevation so that, you know, it would stay, I'm not going to say that it won't get wet, because I agree with Chad that, you know, the next storm is always bigger than the one you anticipate for, but it would certainly be higher than the existing roadway.
I would imagine, but I just needed to hear you say yes. Okay. And I, we also read a bit about an archaeological survey there. At least a credible person here in the community wrote to the city and kind of put us on notice. And I don't have any more information than the letter that was in the packet, but I would like to make sure that if there's some step we need to follow, that we do that.
So we do not have any local requirements to further study something, or do any other due diligence requirements. That is all on the developer, and if something were to occur during construction, then state law would require how they would proceed. Being that most likely the roadways, the infrastructure will be on our contract, I would imagine through some benefit districts, I can't guarantee that, we would have some ability with that to ensure that that was done properly.
So just to add to what Chad's saying, Commissioner, through either a development agreement or through a petition, that project would be ours, we'd manage it, and we'd inspect it. If we did find anything in the area, obviously, we'd stop construction, call the state, have them come and take a look at it. We've done that before on other projects. There was a sewer line project and a water line project in this area just last year, and we didn't find anything during any of those constructions. That was very deep sewer, so it was a lot of excavation, and we obviously talked about it at a pre-construction meeting, that there has been some discussion about some archaeological sites in this area, but we didn't see anything during construction.
Thank you.
Okay, it might be helpful if the developer or the owner has anything they want to comment on, to have them come up, or if not?
Good evening, I drew the shorter than the straw, so. Brad Waller with Alfred Benish and Company. Real quick, thank you very much for having us here and listening to this item. I'm going to be real brief, I know the weather's outside, we probably want to get home at a decent time, and I know we've got a loaded agenda. But on behalf of the developer, Keith, and Rich Seidler, who's the commercial broker on this, we're excited to move forward with this, and at some point in the future, as they start to be able to find some lots and find some users. So, real quick, just a couple of the things, and I'm going to use still, or Chad, I'm going to try and use your presentation here. The question was raised on this, where would buildings be built? All buildings, all structures will be outside the yellow line. Okay? Currently, it's the blue line, the yellow's the future that we anticipate to come in at some point in the future, and we're making sure we're out of that. The only thing that we'll be constructing, I guess that's a good point to add, is the road. I don't know where that one was at. Right there. Yes, existing Wildcat Creek Road right here floods, and it did flood with the last event from roughly right in here, obviously, it didn't get over Scenic, where it connects, but from there west, quarter mile, half mile, however far it went. We are going to raise this up in connection here, bringing it outside of that yellow line, so that, again, we don't know what the storm event will be, but assuming it's a similar or a 100-year storm, this piece of road would stay out of the flood. So that all connections up here and help protect the buildings. Obviously, from here on down and then on out, we're not touching, that'll probably still remain as it sits today. As we do that and elevate it, we are then basically abandoning this road, we have a track B here, we're showing where we can take a lot of area, a lot of dirt out, the 1 to 1.2 minimum ratio. We are taking a lot of area out here also in the floodplain for capacity issues. And then here's where the detention pond would sit. In the drainage analysis, just a real quick summary, it's about 17 acres, it's, we're talking 430 existing, 430 cubic feet per second on an existing runoff. That drains from the field here to the south. In full runoff, with the detention pond, it actually decreases by about 7%, down to about 400 CFS. So it does, it does meet the requirement of existing is equal to, or proposed is equal to or less than existing. I believe the one other thing I was going to mention, just so that we're all on the same page, two things. One is, we're only looking at one detention pond, it was kind of mentioned earlier, that maybe track B was a pond too. It won't be a detention pond or detention structure, but it will be excavated for capacity, for holding the extra water, as we talked about earlier. And the only other comment that I was going to make, at least real quick, we talked about rezoning. The existing C, the C5 proposed there is existing C5 zoning today. So the only quote-unquote rezoning is what we're annexing into the city. So just want to make that... quote-unquote rezoning is what we're annexing into the city. So just want to make that point clear. Rich Seidler has any, stand for any questions or any comments? Do you want to make a comment, Rich? And I'll ask any questions when you're done here, too, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Rich Seidler with Commercial Real Estate Services. Here also representing the applicant tonight. And I don't know how I always get to be so lucky as to be the first person to present a project in a flood zone, and this one is 300 yards away from the creek. So lucky us.
Yeah.
I will simply tell you that one of the first things that I learned when I started cutting my teeth on development is the formula. Post-construction has to be equal to or less than pre-construction runoff. And that's something that I always, once I learned it, I kept it in my mind. And I would simply submit to you that we knew that we were going to be scrutinized over this project because of the recent flooding. But I would simply tell you, as far as the drainage issue goes, we should be concerned about it because of what's happened and what may happen in the future. But our professional engineers have done this drainage study, they've done the calculations, and your professional staff has checked those calculations and affirmed them. We can't predict the future as far as what's going to come down out of the sky, but we can predict what the calculations tell us is that this project qualifies as far as the drainage portions of it go. As far as the archeological question, this is the fifth proposal that I have been before the commission and the planning board on as far as developments go. Three out of the five of those, the question has come up against the archeological sites. Generally, we get a phone call from the same person who says, are you aware that there could be the presence of archeological sites in this area? Well, this area is a pretty big area. We have, on three different occasions, asked them to identify where they might be and have been told all three times that they didn't have to do that, that the onus was on us. As Brian and Chad have correctly said, there is a policy for this. And if anybody associated with the project is working for the city, becomes aware of it, we shut down the site until it's investigated. But there are no known archeological sites in this particular development. Finally, because the night is getting late, I would tell you that what we should be applauding here is the fact that we initially made application to city staff for C5, where you see C2. They, after some discussion with us, convinced us that it was more appropriate to do the C2 because it fell in line with everything else around it, scenic crossings across the street, Kimball Townhomes across the street. And we acquiesced and finally agreed. It also ties in with the Ledstone Development up the hill at Miller Parkway and Scenic. So this is one of those situations where instead of being adversarial with staff, we listened to their concerns, and we agreed. We pulled the C5 back, and now it's C2. And I think that's something noteworthy because too often, we're told that there's a conflict between development and city staff, and that really couldn't be further from the truth. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Other than that, that concludes my comments, at least. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Appreciate it. Any further comments? We'll ask for...
I have one concern, and that's about the house that's south, currently south of Wildcat Creek Road that flooded in September. I also, in asking, even raising the question, I also know that it's in the county, and we are the city, and so we have no real control over what happens. But I would, I mean, and basically, your assurances are that their flooding would not be any worse than it was before the flood, or before with regard to this property. So I have to accept that and hope that the person will go to the county and try to work with them about buying out their property. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any public comment on this issue? If so, just please come forward and let us hear from you. Seeing none, close the public comment and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the first reading of an ordinance annexing a 10.84 acre, acre portion of Blueville Edition Unit 2, yet to be annexed, generally located southwest of the intersection of Anderson Avenue and Scenic Drive, near Wildcat Creek Road, based on conformance with Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan and the Growth Vision and the Capital Improvements Program based on the recommendation of the planning board, and approve first reading of an ordinance rezoning 27.4 acre portion of Blueville Edition Unit 2, generally located south of the intersection of Anderson Avenue and Scenic Drive, from Riley County AG Agricultural District to Deverhood Shopping District, based on the findings in the staff report and the recommendation of the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Well, second to motion. Mayor, can you call the roll? Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. 6470 and the preliminary development plan for the St. Isador Catholic Student Center, PUD for a proposed new Catholic church and student center. And Chad will also be the presenter on this item.
Thank you again, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is an amendment to an existing PUD at the St. Isador Catholic Student Center Church there, Dennison and Anderson. Again, there's your reference point. It's this site. It was originally, the church has been there for several decades, I do believe, and the PUD was established in 2005, essentially to, let me get to it, to develop the lot in this fashion. Separate buildings, courtyard. This building was to remain, and this new layout was originally proposed in 2005. As you know, being a fixture here in the heart of the city, that second part did not occur. But the need exists to create a new building or expand for the students in the church. And so this is what is being proposed as an amendment. By and large, it'll be a new building. I do believe the north-east corner, as a student center will remain, but the sanctuary and building additions will be new. There is a new site layout where the entrance will generally be on this side instead of off of Dennison, and a deceleration lane and a right-in-only into some handicap parking spots, and then further on to the north to, essentially, this site, this church uses, by and large, the K-State's memorial or east parking lot there, west parking lot, excuse me. This is the rendering, the sketch drawings, so to speak, of the design of the facade for the east and the south, the most prominent facades, and then the west and the north. So as you can see, how the building would fall onto the site in reference to the existing building and the driveway and parking. This is a landlocked piece of ground surrounded by apartments and the parking lot to the north of K-State. There were a number of conditions recommended by staff. A lot of them dealt with screening of the neighboring wall or neighboring property. So instead of a yard space, but more of a substantial screening wall, some pedestrian access across the site to make sure we have good connectivity into the site as well as around it, because it is such a vital link for students that walk the campus. So this would be one, as well as this area here, just to make sure that there's good pedestrian connectivity throughout the site. That's really all I have. Again, the planning board heard this item two weeks ago, and as I mentioned, recommended a number of conditions. By and large, they dealt with preparing the plan set for the final development plan. Nothing substantial or earth-shattering, if you will. Planning Board recommended approval of the PUD amendment, and city staff also recommends that you approve this amendment to the St. Isador's Student Center PUD. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just have one quick question. I want to make sure I understand.
Yes, sir.
The bottom right on Anderson. So that's, that's going to be like an exit lane?
This here?
At the bottom. Essentially, how do I turn into this, that lane right there?
Yeah, so this would only be for westbound traffic.
Got it.
That could then slip into the deceleration lane and turn north into the site.
And then those are the handicap stalls, and then if I was just general parking, I drive up to the bigger parking lot?
Right. Either come through the site or use the existing drive-through, drivelanes into the parking lot off of Dennison.
Got it.
Yep.
Now, I thought I, I thought I understood this when I read the packet, but now I'm a bit confused. So the, this slide, I'm trying to make into this slide. I'm having a hard time.
Okay, so let's get this back live. So this was, oops, maybe I hit the wrong one. There we go. So this is what the footprint of the new building would be. Obviously, it doesn't have the roadway design associated with it. It really just shows the change in the building footprint. So I don't know exactly what your question may be.
Well, go to the next slide.
Sure.
So is that the same as the red slide you just showed us?
The, generally speaking, there may be a snafu, if you will, with these little bump outs. But generally speaking, that should be approximately where that footprint will be versus, or related to the property lines. And this is, this is that property line to the south there, so. Is there, are you concerned or have a question about the distance, or?
Well, when you go back to the red slide, so where, where is, what's the more northern portion of this red slide? What is that? That's part of the building?
This is, this would be the building, yeah. This, this slide only is the blow-up of generally this corner of the building. It's a, maybe should have put a reference picture or something. It is just a blow-up of this corner of the property.
But I think the one in our packet goes all the way out to Dennison, so.
And we, so I do have the plan set here that would show the fuller site plan.
And is that top-left piece already exist? Is there a building out there now?
Here?
Yeah.
There is not, no.
Okay.
Essentially, the building is in this lighter color dimple marked, and then comes down to the south.
Yeah, also, I think, as Commissioner mentioned, there's a little bit of worry about the traffic on Anderson. But Ron and I were on the radio this morning, and we were kind of talking through this. And most of the high-traffic condition, at least for entry into the church, would be on presumably Sunday sometime when traffic on Anderson is down. So probably mitigates some of the concern we have. And we're just always mindful of curb cuts.
Sure.
Then the other one of kind of concern was on Dennison, where right now, they've got an agreement of some kind with KSU for use of that parking. So when you turn in a little further north down the parking lot and then come back to park next to the church, it is not aligned with the entry into the alumni center. But that would be up to them. And of course, it's additional cost for them to do that curb cut and close the other one.
Well, and truthfully, they don't even own that land that is directly across from
Right.
the, it's K-State. I can't speak for K-State, but my, my past experience is that is always been a challenge.
So the, but the presumption is the functionality of that parking lot would continue as it is written today, so that they share use of the southern portion of it, yeah.
I believe the reality of this site is the existing parking lots into the site to the north of the building, and then the new one to the west and the north are by and large handicapped accessible parking for the church. The majority of the churchgoers either walk there because they're college students, this is a student center, so they walk to from the student neighborhood, or they park in the university parking lot to the north there where there's ample parking, so.
Questions or comment for Chad? Let me ask for any comment from the public on this item.
Bruce, good evening. Bruce McMillan, 555 Points Avenue, Architectural Record for the Project, and thank you for allowing us to come before you this evening. A couple of issues. You've requested a little more information about the parking. Essentially, this has been a long-term agreement between Kansas State University and St. Isador's regarding the use of West Stadium Parking Lot. We have a recent letter from Vice President Bontrager that has confirmed the continuing use of that parking area. And the ingress off of Dennison cannot move any further north, I think, as you can recognize there. The deceleration lane was a discussion item with city staff regarding the opportunity to meet the handicapped access parking spaces required for the project based upon the seating capacity in the building. So that is a consideration that staff allowed us to bring forward at this time. The exiting to the north into West Stadium Parking Lot is a, an agreement that came about probably during the tenure of maybe Jerry Carter, possibly Abe Fatae, but no, no later than that. And that was simply just an easement that was granted at that time to exit north and add additional parking on the north side.
I do just have one question.
Yes.
So you would, westbound Anderson would exit into this drive we see there at the bottom, and then go around, is it a one lane?
Yes, ma'am.
So one car could stop the whole thing?
This would be deceleration coming here, and then
Around, yeah.
Bringing into here, and then, yes, there would be these several parking spaces here.
And then, but also, they could go on up to the top to the university parking lot?
Right. There would be, there would be no access to this direction.
Okay.
They would come out here and go straight north.
That's what I wondered. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Bruce. Appreciate it. Okay, we've called for a public hearing, and that was the only comment that we see. So we now open to entertain a motion.
I would just like to say that I appreciate the need for this expansion at St. Isador's. I think it's been crowded there for services for a lot of years, at least 20 I know of. And so maybe more than that. And I'm also, I want to compliment the university and the church for working together for parking, because it would seem a good compliment together for parking, because it would seem a good complement, uh, for timing, and, uh, I know that, I saw a letter, one of the letters from Tom Rossen when he was Vice President, and now Cindy Bontrager when she's Vice President, so it's a longstanding agreement, and it's the kind of cooperation and collaboration that we like to see, so for all the parties, thank you for that.
I just wanted to say real quick, thank you for including that turning lane, uh, if that wasn't included, I don't know if I would have voted, uh, yes on this, this evening, I'm not a big fan of direct, uh, turns into driveways off of Anderson, we don't want another Starbucks situation, so, uh, I appreciate that being.
Good. Motion?
Yes, um, Mayor, I move approval of the first reading of an ordinance, amending ordinance number sixty-four seventy, and the preliminary development plan of the Saint Isidore's Catholic Student Center Planned Unit Development, generally located to the northwest of the intersection of Anderson Avenue and Dennison Avenue, based on the findings in the staff report with eight conditions of approval, and the recommendation of the urban area, Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Second to motion. Gary?
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you, now we'll move to item C, which is to consider the Manhattan Middle School Improvement Steering Committee recommendations, this is regards to the design of the recreation centers in conjunction with the Anthony and Eisenhower Middle Schools, and the presenter will be Eddie Estes, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Eddie?
Let me get the right presentation up here.
Did you have it preloaded?
Yeah, we did, Jared had it up there, but, uh, there we go.
Perfect.
Thank you. It's always nice to have somebody who can work, work your computer. Mayor, thank you tonight, Commissioners, thank you tonight, um, just some history, March sixth, twenty eighteen, City Commission approved the design-build team of Macallan Gordon Construction, Anderson Knight Architects, F S S Architects, B S E Structural Engineer, S M H Consultants, and P K M R Engineers to complete Phase One of the design-build services for the Parks and Recreation Middle School Recreation Centers. April seventeenth, the Commission appointed one of the largest steering committees, I think we've had in the city, forty-four steering committee members, to work with that design-build team, and develop a recommendation to present to you in regards to a schematic design of those recreation centers. The design-build process is a detailed two-step process that requires the design-build team to develop a schematic design for the Commission to consider before they advance on to a guaranteed maximum price for construction of the facilities. Development, presentation of the G M P for the Commission to consider would complete Phase One Services. If the Commission would approve the G M P for the construction of the facilities, we would then move into Phase Two, which is the final design of the facilities and the construction of those facilities. Phase Two would require a separate contract with that design-build team, so tonight, what you're going to be considering is the thirty percent conceptual design that the design-build team and the steering committee, working in conjunction, have developed for you to consider, and if you're willing to accept that conceptual design and authorize that design-build team to develop a, what's called a G M P, Guaranteed Maximum Price, for you to consider for the cost to construct the facilities. That G M P will come to you at a later time. City Administration certainly recommends that you accept the steering committee schematic design recommendation, and authorize the design-build team to develop that G M P and bring that to you at a later time, most likely that'll be in the, uh, June timeframe, uh, the design team obviously will need some time after tonight, if you're agreeable with this conceptual design, to develop that guaranteed maximum price to bring to you at a later time. And as I said, the G M P, after presented to you the Commission, if the Commission accepts the G M P, the next step is Phase Two, require a separate contract, Phase Two is the actual final design documents and construction of the facilities. That's just a kind of a quick history, Steering Committee, and the process that we're in, the design-build is not a normal process, obviously, so there is further presentations that you're going to see before we would go into actual construction of these facilities. We have several steering committee members here tonight, I see Eric Reed, Assistant Superintendent with the school district here tonight as well, and several, and several community members that have been attending the steering committee meetings as well. The design-build team has conducted six steering committee meetings to develop this conceptual design that you'll see tonight. Also tonight, Barry Schmidt with Macallan Gordon, Tracy Anderson with Anderson Knight Architects, will present to you the work that they've conducted in developing this conceptual design with the steering committee. So with that, I'll just step out of the way and let these guys go. Unless you have any other questions for me?
We know where you are.
Okay, I'll stay close.
Okay, thank you, um, I'm Barry Schmidt with Macallan Gordon Construction, it's great, great to be back in front of you all again, um, so without further ado, I'll, uh, turn it over to Tracy, and we'll, uh, dive right in.
Uh, can we pass on to the first slide? So again, I'm gonna back up and kind of go through this as methodically as I can, but as quickly as I can, um, some of this will be, uh, review for you since we were here last time, but I think it's important to establish the baseline of how we got from point A to point B. Um, again, you know, from years ago, the Strategic Facility Improvement Plan study that was done, it outlined four key, uh, elements within the Parks and Rec Department, um, and you see those listed up there. This particular project that we're talking to you about tonight is item number one on that list, uh, and the other three are the other elements that were a part of the quarter sales tax minus the number four up there, um, so. So again, Eddie mentioned this, uh, you appointed a forty-four-person steering committee, uh, group to us to work with, to further the scope of these projects, and to help us, um, program additional amenities into these facilities. There was a baseline, uh, that we were given, that included a certain number of basketball courts, uh, volleyball activities, um, things like that, so that was really where we started at, and then we engaged the steering committee to ask the questions, um, what else can we get into these facilities for the amount of dollars that have been budgeted for these facilities? And so at Steering Committee, uh, Meeting One, which was back in April of twenty-eighteen, we, uh, asked that group at that time, and almost every member of the committee was there, I think we maybe had forty-three or forty-two members show up of the forty-four, if I remember correctly, um, and we asked them some very specific questions, what were the, are those on the next slide? Um, what were the opportunities that these projects, um, should attempt to provide to the community, um, what are the challenges that these projects should attempt to solve for the community, and then, uh, what do you think will make the project a success and bring value to the community? So we really opened it up with those three questions, and at that meeting with forty-four members, we broke up into smaller groups and had roundtable discussion, and then each group reported out to us, we documented their information, um, and then we had a few more questions, uh, that you see up there, and I'm sure you've read this, I won't read them, uh, right now, but, uh, at the culmination of that meeting, that was really a lot of information gathering on our part. What you see up here on this slide, and maybe even this next slide, are the outputs of that, uh, and the little orange people you see next to each one of those items was how they were basically ranked by the number of responses for that particular item, um, uh, of importance, and so that gave us something to go on, uh, over the course of the summer, to, uh, start to put together, what are some options, how do we take this information and put that together in a set of options that they can then digest, um, knowing what the option is, and what the potential costs are of those options. Between that meeting right at the end of, uh, or beginning of summer, right before summer started, and our subsequent second meeting, which was after summer was over, we also met with city staff and, uh, USD three-eighty-three staff, and others within the, uh, city organization, Parks and Rec, to get some feedback on, uh, more generic items, heating and cooling systems, alarm systems, controls, those types of things, and so all of those things were gathered during the summer months when we weren't meeting with the steering committee. So then, uh, next slide, please, so then, when we came back to the steering committee after summer was over in the fall of twenty-eighteen, we had put together a list of options based on that feedback we had gotten from the first one, and you see those seven options up here, and we had price tags associated with each one of those, um, and we talked through each one of those items at that meeting, uh, in as much detail as we could, so that after that meeting, we could then, um, administer an online survey to the steering committee about their rank for each one of these items, um, and we did explain, there's a couple of things on here, specifically the running track, um, you can't have all three of those options in the facility, and we explained that to them, each one had its own price tag, uh, we explained to them that a elevated running track, short or long, carried with it the necessity to put in an elevator to access that level, as well as stairs to get up to that level, um, the benefits of that also allowed for some additional spectator seating up on that level, and some multipurpose space up on that level, and so we kind of talked through all of that. Uh, the other ones are a little bit more cut and dry in that if you choose this, you don't X that out, um, so we went back, and this, I think, was the order that they, um, put them in, they weren't necessarily presented in this order, but that was the order from the online survey that they fell out of, uh, the, the results from. So after that, uh, we went back, and we had been up to that point just showing some very, very conceptual rectangular shaped floor plans, and how spaces could be arranged within that. We then went back with that added layer of information and scope of work, um, to then start to fine-tune these envelope, building envelopes and the footprints, and ultimately, the subsequent steering committee meetings after that were us coming back to them with, hey, here's an idea, or two, or three, um, not only just from an interior court layout, but even exterior, um, uh, aesthetics of what the buildings could look like, uh, receiving back feedback from doing some imagery, uh, sessions with the steering committee, to get a sense of what should these facilities look like, um, and so on, so that was all put together, and ultimately, uh, at the end of that, this, this, uh, list here is what the facilities are today conceptually, and we've got some images that we'll show you after this slide, but each facility is forty-eight thousand nine hundred square feet, uh, each facility has the ability, and I, I need to clarify on this, to have four basketball courts, five volleyball courts, twelve pickleball courts, not all at the same time, various arrangements of that, and anything in between, if, if you're using four basketball courts, you're using all of the gym floor space, if you're using two basketball courts, you very well might have three volleyball courts going, and if you're using six pickleball courts, you could have a basketball and a volleyball going, so there's umpteen number of arrangements that that could take on. We also, uh, included the portable turf, which allows us to have soccer, footsaw, golf, baseball, um, and probably a handful of other options when that turf is down, uh, and the turf right now is that if you envision the floor plans, you have two gyms on this side of a core area, and two courts on this side of a core area, we have enough turf at each facility to cover two courts of area, not the entire area. Um, and with having turf, one of the things we had to explain to the steering committee was, if you choose turf, there's a certain amount of storage that comes along with that turf, because it's not down year-round, um, and so that was factored into not only the pricing, but also the design. Um, the elevated running track, uh, made it in there, the lobby and mezzanine with lounge and spectating seating, community rooms, uh, and concessions, and, um, the, the raising of the track really offered us and afforded us a lot of opportunity to capture space that was already within the footprint of the building, um, and then allowed us to include some of these others without expanding the footprint of the building, and so it's really a cost-effective way to gather space, or to capture space. The spec, or, uh, the community room space, and you'll see this in the floor plan, it's one large room that can be subdivided into two spaces, uh, and then the concessions area, and there's a lot of discussion that happened around that, not only with the steering committee, but with a neighborhood, uh, group that was present at almost every, um, uh, session we had as well, and, uh, and I'm sure you'll hear some more about that, and I'll talk about that when we get to the floor plans, but we made some modifications, uh, on that to help facilitate future finish-out of that space, to make hopefully the facility better in the long run, so I think with that, well, I should ask, do you have any questions on any of that up to this point?
Yeah, the only one that confused me when I was reading through, it's, I'm, maybe not a confusion, but can you explain more of the thinking behind why turf is necessary? Like, when I think about the facilities that we have in Manhattan, obviously, we've put money into baseball facilities, we have pretty robust golf facilities, so why was turf a priority to use that money in that way rather than somewhere else?
Um, I may, I may allow some of the steering committee members who are present to address that question as well, uh, when you open it up to public comment, but what we heard was just the ability to, uh, have soccer practice year-round, uh, you know, when, when outdoor practices get rained out, or in the winter, when they're wanting to continue to hone in on their skills, um, and baseball, and, uh, I, I would probably tell you, baseball and soccer were the two primary concerns, but once you put turf in, you have other options that open up to you as well, so you can have batting cages that come down so that, uh, you have baseball practice year-round, and if you think about this, we have two identical facilities, the, uh, flexibility that we'll have, um, based on each one having the same thing, just, you won't necessarily, and this will be partly operational to decision-making, but you could have turf just down at one for, say, three months, and still have one facility that's all court space of some configuration, and still half of that facility, and so just the flexibility and what you can offer on a year-round basis, I think was one of the driving factors for having turf in these facilities. I think, was one of the driving factors for having turf in these facilities.
It's okay if you don't know this off the top of your head, but how big of a budget line item is that turf?
He can answer that.
I believe it was about $250,000 for both facilities.
Okay.
Any other questions on any of this information to this point? Nope, go ahead.
I do want to point out that that was one of the additional add on features that the steering committee did choose. So we'll cover this a little bit further in the slide when we get to the budget perspective. But the general consensus was to start with the minimum requirements. So the facilities had a baseline expectation of a certain number of certain programs to be involved in it. And that was the starting point. And then these add on features were allowed, gave the steering committee the ability to pick and choose what, based on a priority that the steering committee had for different activities.
And Barry will hit on that a little later. There's the baseline of the building's cost X. And so we figured that out and we protected that bucket of money. We also figured out what the site costs were between both facilities. And they're not the same, but we figured out what that cost was and protected that. And that left us this bucket of money to kind of have some fun with. And that's really the bucket of money that the steering committee gave us direction on and where these priorities fell out at. So this is a overview of the Eisenhower site. And what you can see here is, this is Walters Drive right here. This is the existing school in this configuration. This little piece and this piece here are the future additions. More than likely, they won't be that shape, but they will be in this general location. And then this is the new rec center here. You may recall that maybe last year or the year before, you saw this facility primarily placed over here in this zone. As we started this process, it was brought to our attention that the city was looking at extending Kirkwood through the west edge of this site. I think because of partly annexing this area for future development where Walters Morgan Construction is and some storage units, that if that were to happen, the steering committee agreed that this then would be the ideal location versus over here where really the only opportunity to access it would have been to come in through the school's parking lot and into some sort of parking configuration. Whether the building was long ways this way or this way, there would have had to have been additional parking. And the facility would have kind of been hidden behind the school. As we kept moving on, it became clearer that this Kirkwood extension was probably going to be a reality. And so that just further cemented the idea that this location would be best. And there's probably several reasons you know that this Kirkwood extension might be a good idea. And that is, it allows buses to pick up children, come out here, go out to Marlet Avenue and get to a lighted intersection versus the intersection of Walters and TCB, which has some safety issues. And I know Rob, Ryan, and those have talked to you about that in the past. But this also allowed the building to present itself to the public from what will, you know, TC, I can't go off screen, sorry. Marlet and TCB is right over here. And so a lighted intersection, getting people to this, this building fronts that intersection right there. So it'll have a good public presence as people want to come to this facility. Or even for, say, a tournament weekend, people trying to find the facility, it presents itself to the public well in this orientation. Parking will be somewhere out front. We know we've got a little bit of a grading issue to be dealt with here. The plan is that the building will be at the same elevation as the school building, which is out of the floodplain. And the parking, I think there's a little bit of site work that has to be accomplished there to accommodate that as well. But this is the orientation of the Eisenhower building.
How many parking spaces?
Shoot, I can't remember off the top of my head.
I believe it was about 200.
Okay, I just wondered, thanks.
That was something we, and I'll be honest, originally when we were planning, we had more than what was needed early on. And then once we talked with city staff, we were able to hone in on the number that was actually required by the regulations or desired. Oops, wrong way. So this now is the, well, sorry, I should pause for a second. Any questions on, other questions on the Eisenhower site? This now is the Anthony site. So you have Browning Avenue, Pecanwood. And again, if you go back maybe a year and a half to two years, you were probably recalling that the building was located up here in this location, which I think was a logical solution at the time. The only issue that really had was this dirt here is about six, seven, eight feet higher than the floor of the building. And the connecting link that would have had to get to that would have presented some challenges, not only from a grade standpoint, but also just accessibility to the football field, the track, from where people would park for games and events at this destination right here. So we went out and we sort of assessed the site. Is it even feasible to move the building to the south side of Anthony? And we determined that it was. And that we could then get a similar engagement to the building from whatever future addition happens here at the middle school directly into the building and have essentially a similar case at both Eisenhower and Anthony, even though they might enter in a slightly different spot. But again, the building sits on there fairly well. The building will be at the same elevation, finished floor elevation as the school. And then the thought was this building presents itself much better to Browning as a busier street than Pecanwood, which is really more of a residential street heading into this residential neighborhood back here. Again, parking out front, same number of parking stalls. The main issue on this site was that this general area is currently used as detention when the school was originally built. And so we will be reworking some of that detention and either working it around the edge of the parking and/or even creating a small detention area back here. That's for our engineers to figure out once we move into the next concept or next stage of the services. But that has been vetted out that we can accommodate that and approved by city staff. So any questions on the Anthony site? So these are the basic floor plans. You see the first floor on the top. And I'll tell you from the very beginning, not only was the cities, one of the city's main concerns and one of the school district's main concerns, but also the steering committee's main concerns, was security between the school and the public during school hours when students may be using part of this facility. And one of the very first concepts we delivered was to take all of this ancillary space from off the front of the building and push it inside and separate the building into two parts, putting two courts on one side and two courts on the other. And that allowed us to, and in this particular plan, this would be the school side right here. So there'd be a connection to the school somewhere over in this corner. But that allows this to be completely a solid wall. You know, a door with some glass in it possibly for visibility. But this would be completely solid and secure during the school hours, allowing people to enter the building and use this gymnasium and the track above on this side. And that was also one of the reasons the steering committee chose the short track. If we would have chosen the long track, it would have gone over this. And we would have had to figure out some way to secure that during the day, whether we block it off, you know, roughly in here and have a cut through, which would just be more track to build on top of the long track and additional expense. So a good compromise was the short track option, which you can see above right here that goes around. And again, this is a solid wall, so there's no visibility into the school side. So the security, the primary secure issues were resolved in that manner. There'll be some technology that goes into that as well on doors and things like that. But that was the main design challenge there. Again, as you enter, you'll enter a lobby, a small vestibule here. You have some public space, seating area out here. You immediately enter and hit the control desk, which is, you know, a low desk where it'll be staffed. And then you have some, a couple of offices and storage space in this general area with stand up workstations here. And again, that's all open to this front entry. So there's no visible barrier there. And that was in part a request by Parks and Rec Department that we want, the more eyes we have of people who are programming things here out towards the entry, the better. There is also a small storage space in here for whatever items they might need to store in there from an office standpoint and a small workspace where they'd have their copier and printer and things like that. You can see the elevator right here that goes up to the second floor. And also, when you enter, the stairs that go up to that mezzanine level or right here to the, my left, but as you enter, it would be to your right. And you would ascend the stairs and come up and land right here on the mezzanine level, which is this additional open mezzanine area and spectator seating area that overlooks through a railing that overlooks these courts on this side of the building. On the backside of that stair, and it's hard to see here, but this section of wall right here and all of these circles, which are really little chairs, that is seating for people to be able to sit and look through a wall, a glass wall partition, and watch activities over there. So if you've got kids in basketball and they're doing basketball practice, you can sit in here, have your eyes on them, but have the noise reduced from being inside the gymnasium. Additionally, behind and underneath the stairs, a little bit more public space to activate lounge type space, soft seating, things like that that'll be placed there. Behind this little piece right here is a spot for vending machines to be kind of off of that main corridor and tucked away so they're not sitting out in front of the wall. You've also got two restrooms here, which are, can be public use restrooms that have a shower in each one, but they'll also be used for referee restrooms during, say, a tournament or something like that. So I think there'll be one or two lockers in there for refs to be able to change clothes and shower and use those facilities. You have the public restrooms, which are located down here, men's and women's, directly accessed off of this corridor that goes all the way through. And then you have another set of smaller restrooms that are accessed by the school side so that kids don't have to go all the way back into the school building to use restroom. What you can't see right here is underneath this O is a set of locked doors. So during the day, those doors are locked. Nobody, nobody from the public can use these restrooms right here. But when it's opened up, then we have additional restroom capacity for when this is being used for a tournament or in the evenings or early mornings when it's being used by the public. We have storage area set up kind of the same way. This is a small mechanical and also mechanical spaces up here that aren't labeled. But we have storage and all of these boxes and racks you can see here are the turf. And then we have a diagram, I didn't put it in this presentation, that shows where all the nets, soccer nets and other equipment that you would roll out onto the court are stacked inside here as well, plus this storage area on the school side. So there's a fair amount of storage back here for equipment, for equipment that we'll get now and for future equipment. There is a locked door between these two as well, so that that can be secured. But when it's needed to be, it can be opened up. Let's say you want to put turf on this side, you can just go right through the storage room and not have to go out and around and through the corridor. When you get upstairs, again, this is the mezzanine area. We've got a couple of small bathrooms up here, single hole bathrooms, custodial space. The elevator spills out right here. We've got the concession slash learning kitchen right there in the blue and a storage space off of that. And then we have the multipurpose room right here that can be divided in half. And then a storage room off of that to where you can store tables, chairs, a small portable stage, things like that. And then the track that goes around this way. You've also got these captured corners, which is where people can put a yoga mat down, do some yoga or stretch. Store moms can put their strollers there if they want to. They've also got a little soft seating area here again that could be programmed for a two or three person class or two or three people get together and want to do some yoga out here. So the main theme of all of this was how do we design in as much flexibility as possible in all of these spaces that we have? This is confusing, I know, but you can see four basketball courts. You can see 12 pickleball courts, three on each one. And then I'll be darned if I can make out the volleyball courts on here, but they're on there somewhere and there's five of them. So these areas out here I didn't talk about, but that's where ground mounted mechanical equipment would be placed that would provide the heating and cooling for the two gymnasiums. And then I think there's a different system that gets used for the core area in there. So I'll stop right there on this slide and answer any questions you might have about those.
I just have two quick ones. What's the actual length of the track?
Oh, gosh, I wished you wouldn't have asked that.
I'm just wondering, like, what, yeah.
How many laps per mile?
Yeah, what's the definition of short versus long?
Well, it was just our definition of short versus long.
I thought there was probably, there was a super technical explanation.
Do you remember how many laps per mile?
13?
Somewhere in that range, yeah.
Okay, okay. I was making sure people weren't going to get dizzy. That's how short it was. And then for the mezzanine, is that mostly to view how I'm looking at it, the courts to the west, or can you see the courts to the east too?
You cannot see these courts.
So that's just a wall?
That's a solid wall, yeah. It's primarily to use and see over this. And we do have another sort of built in, what I'll call a sit at counter height, sorry, piece right here where you could sit there and look over and have a conversation with somebody. But this is open to this area. It's just a railing that goes across there. It's not a glass wall like it is below. So sound will come up into that space to some degree.
So during, during activities or tournaments, you didn't talk about bleachers. Where do people sit?
Yeah, you can kind of see ideas for bleachers here, these elements right here. And Barry may have the numbers on his slide, I'm hoping. But we have, we're basically saying tilt and roll bleachers. So those are bleachers that you can move around. And I forget the exact quantity that we have in the project at the moment, but I can get you that information if you absolutely want it. I want to say we had enough currently for 120, 150 people to sit in the budget right now. And those are items that we could continue to add bleachers as needed. But you could pull bleachers from all of one side to another to outfit it around. And I should mention, that was, you know, there's even some shown here. I can't remember, but I think they're essentially a three tiered bleacher that when not in use, you can tilt up against the wall. They're out of the way. They're not a collapsible bleacher that would collapse up against the wall and permanently mounted there. They're so you can move them around and get the most efficiency out of them or even put them into the storage room if you want them out of there altogether.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have enough because if we, if part of the purpose for these rec centers is to have tournaments, then we've got to be able to accommodate the visitors.
And I can, I can get you that exactly. And I can, I can get you that exact number of what we have budgeted right now. That was, though, really important, and I'll even talk about this. One, several members of the steering committee were really keen to hone in on the functionality of the court space and exactly where are bleachers, where are scoreboards, and where are referee tables, benches for the teams. And we didn't include all of those diagrams in this particular presentation, but we did come back to the steering committee once they were, once they put that question out there and showed them, and we got buy-in from the steering committee that, yes, that would work. So...
Yeah, I'd just like to see at some future point, kind of a, maybe just a picture of what the court would look like with the bleachers and the scoring tables and all that in place.
Sure.
So, I get an idea of setback and so on.
Sure.
What's, what is shown here, there's kind of these long skinny, this line between the courts, it represents a divider curtain that would be mounted on the ceiling that would actually come down and divide the courts, so you don't have volleyballs and things going from court to court. These do represent scoring tables, so there would be space for tables, for the scoreboards, for scorekeepers, those kind of things, to be sitting with adequate room between the out-of-bounds line and that divider curtain. And that's represented on both, both courts, both sides.
I think those are actually the team benches and the scoring tables are underneath the words gymnasium. So, but, yeah, I think we could easily generate, and we've got some 3D views. It might not show those particular items set up in those views, but we can, we can certainly get those if you desire. Any other questions on these particular images?
Use the term "learning kitchen"? What does that mean?
That's a great question, and I'm sure there are some members from the Greater Northview area or Action Team here tonight that might tell you what their idea of that is. Essentially, what we heard was the desire to have a space that had the equipment in it, that would allow them to do some demonstration-type events, maybe working with single moms to help them learn how to cook meals. Also have community events where maybe they could not only do potluck, but also make something there in the kitchen. And honestly, I'll let them sort of expand on that, but that was what we heard. And I might as well address that at this point in time. Originally, we had a much smaller space than this square right here for the concessions area, and it was truly originally meant to be just a concession, so your typical concessionaire-type stuff. No cooking equipment was budgeted within the facility. And once we heard the feedback and their desires, we went back and looked at this, is there a way for us to accommodate the future ability to put some equipment in, even if it can't make it in as a part of the initial project? And so, we reworked the multipurpose space. We actually made it a little bit bigger, and we made this space a little bit bigger. We really took away from this space and this space a little bit, is what we did to capture that space. And we thought that was a great suggestion and an idea. And the impact that it had on the budget at the time was extremely minimal. So, we, we reconfigured it, and we showed a potential option. That doesn't mean it's going to be this, because we're showing a stove, refrigerator and all that stuff in there right now, but we've made it pretty clear that the equipment isn't in it, but that community group has expressed the desire to potentially get grants to furnish it with equipment. And so, we looked at what can we do to provide the infrastructure for them to move forward with that and make it feasible, that if they were to get those grants and purchase that equipment, that it could be installed and used in the manner that they would like to use it. And so, that's, that's kind of where it has stopped at this point on that.
Okay, I have a little bit of a devil's advocate question about the mezzanine. So, I'm there as a parent, there's a, we have a, we're hosting a volleyball tournament here. Really, the mezzanine is only serving that one court that is directly above, right? Because the curtain would be down, so I'm not going to be able to see a far one, and I'm not going to be able to see the other two. When you factor that against the cost and something else that we could do with that space, the steering committee understood that and found that to be worth it still?
I'm, I'm assuming, yes, because that was the direction they gave us. Now, I mean, you're, you're right, when this curtain's down, will you be able to sit here and see the game going on over here? It's going to be a little fuzzy. It's not, it, it may not be a solid curtain. It might be a mesh screen curtain, but it's hard to say at this point.
But largely, you're only going to see one.
But, yeah, and, you know, honestly, I don't know what the ability, if it's a tournament, will it be open to the public for other use? Can you stand around this edge and watch a volleyball game? Or would you go down and sit on a bleacher? But, yeah.
I just ask because the idea of a mezzanine, the idea of that is really cool, right? The idea of being able to like look down on the gym's a really cool idea, but I want to make sure that we're investing in something that's functional as well.
And again, there, I'm going to, there might be some committee members here that might want to address that particular question as well.
Okay.
Or give you their reason for why that was important anyway. This is just a blow-up of that central area. I probably should have done that a while back, but you can just see it in a little more detail here, what that middle area was. And then, these are some exterior images. This particular one is, is looking at the exterior of the Eisenhower's facility, and you can see that behind it is the middle school. And one of the things, well, I'll, I'll make sure I point this out. This is not the name of the facility. It's merely a placeholder. I think there will be additional engagement with a group of some sort, however that manifests itself, to come up with the name for each facility, whether it's a committee that's formed, or a contest that's had, or something, but we anticipate engaging the community additionally to come up with the actual names for each of these facilities. And possibly engaging students on some of the imagery and maybe the naming as well from the middle schools for some of the graphics and imagery that might be inside these facilities. But, we've primarily, you know, these are big boxes, they're big metal building structures to capture that space. And so, we wanted to see how could we break this down more aesthetically? How can we make these attractive facilities that say something about our community and our desire to have these facilities for our youth, for our community and for our seniors, for the public at large? And so, what you're seeing is a mix of things. You're seeing some metal building panels that are not unlike what might be on this building in some spots, mixed with, that's an economy skin to go on that. The outward aesthetics were not the priority of the steering committee. It was more function and what can we get on the insides? But everybody wants them to look nice. And so, that was really the direction we headed. We drew some clues from the school and have some masonry elements that you can see in what looks like brick here, whether that's brick or stone or whatever is still yet to be fully flushed out. But also, what you can see is these areas here and on these gable ends are daylighting panels. And that was a really high priority for the steering committee as well, is how can we introduce as much natural light into the gymnasiums as possible? And so, we've got a fair amount of that on each side of the gymnasium, and I think you'll see that in a, in a subsequent slide. But then you've also got the front entries here, which have a lot of what's called curtain wall glazing, so not unlike the front entry of this building, lots of glass. And then, a little bit of a covered element here with a small, small landscaped outdoor space in the front. And then this is how that might look at night, you know, being lit up on the inside, a little bit of a covered entry here. You can see that these panels glow, these daylighting panels glow from the inside out. And then on the inside, you really start to get a feel for how much those gable ends, and the other daylighting panels would be on the right side of the slide into that space. I guess you can kind of see scores, tables, benches, scoreboards, bleachers, things like that in this image. Obviously, it's not populated with a ton of people for the image, but this is kind of how those interior spaces are working out. There will be more equipment up in the ceiling, but when you start adding all of that stuff, the rendering gets really messy and hard to read, so... But there'll be dropped-down volleyball courts and things like that, or volleyball nets along with the basketball goals that are housed up in the ceiling area. The flooring, if I didn't mention it, is a synthetic flooring, multipurpose flooring that allowed us to do all the things that we want to do. It was a long discussion with the steering committee. There was discussion about wood flooring, but once you introduced wood flooring, you completely changed the heating and cooling system that has to go into that to maintain certain levels of humidity and things like that, or you get floors that start cupping and warping and twisting. And then also, you, you limit yourself on the flexibility of what can be done on those floors, and you cannot put turf down on a wood floor. So, it was ultimately decided that this was the best multipurpose option, and we can get that in what looks like wood flooring, but it's really a monolithic synthetic floor. And the playability is just like that of a wood floor. So, it just doesn't have the wood floor sound when you're bouncing the ball on it. So now, I'll turn it over. Well, I'll stop there before I turn it over to Barry. Any other questions about any of this imagery?
Nope. All right. So, as Tracy mentioned before, we had the two facilities that, the true desire of the two facilities was to make them as equal as possible, excluding the site work. We, we do have two different sites. They are, they are fairly different. The Anthony site was a touch more expensive, but we didn't want to penalize the actual Anthony building structure for that additional site work. So, as you can see up above here, these are the site costs, and then we've provided kind of a general breakdown by major building type of what the, what the cost, where we're spending our dollars on the different systems. So, where we've wound up is nearly two, you know, fairly close, a building cost per site, which leaves us with a total cost of $16,737,000 for the buildings. We also recognize that there are a few other items that need to be included in this, such as furniture fixtures and equipment. This would be things like computers, chairs, desks, signage, anything else that would be required to make this facility operational, as well as potentially an art component, some sort of functional art that would be desired for this project. And then testing and inspections, this, this cost would be to make sure that the projects are built correctly and of, of good quality. So, that leaves us with a grand total of $17,370,000 for the two facilities, which is, is right in line with the target budget of $17 million that we were expecting. Do you have any questions on the budget?
So, we've got 2 million of that as site work, and then what's the contingency on this?
The contingencies are included within these individual line items. So, we have what would be a construction contingency that is at 3%, and it is include, you know, spread across all of these numbers, so that each one has its own share of construction contingency, as well as a little bit of design contingency included. So, we can complete the design. There's some things that we've made some assumptions on that just haven't been designed yet, and as those details get worked out over the next phases of design, that design contingency will go to zero and be ultimately folded into construction costs. So, we will have full breakout of those contingency dollar amounts, as well as full detailed information provided for at GMP time. This is really meant to give the, the commission an idea of where we're at based on this current design without the full detail of that estimate. So, we will be prepared to have that information at the, at the GMP time when we come back to you and hopefully the June timeline.
3% is, sounds low to me, but, I mean, you're doing it, so...
Based on our knowledge of the design team, this is me elbowing my buddy Tracy here, and the knowledge of the projects and, and the process, we feel that 3% is, is accurate for, for these two buildings.
Okay.
We're comfortable with that.
Thanks.
I do want to move into schedule here.
Interrupt you for just a second.
You bet.
Can you go back to that slide? What Barry didn't mention, and I'm hoping he can recall, these budget numbers come from a certain percentage that are dollars that they actually went out to trades and got estimates on from the trade partners, and that percentage is fairly high at this level.
Yeah, that's correct. These, these numbers were not generated in a vacuum, as in, we didn't have an estimator sitting in a locked, dark closet somewhere behind a calculator. We reached out to the trade partner community. We've garnered about 28 different budgets from our subcontractors and trade partners to, to establish these numbers that you're seeing up here. So, we have some pretty good confidence that these numbers are accurate. They are accounting for this project to be built in the year 2020. So, they're, they're accounting for the current market conditions, which are pretty wild at this point. So, they, they do understand the climate that's, that's happening there, and we're, we're doing what we can. By having that GMP in the June timeline will allow us to go ahead and capture some of those things and, and minimize the exposure to some of the volatility in materials that we're seeing right now. Moving into the construction schedule, Tracy showed a little bit on what happened in 2018, which was generally speaking, the preliminary design and, and steering committee meetings, which I, I do want to take a minute and, and thank the steering committee and all the folks that attended. We had quite a number of folks from USC 383, as well as Parks and Rec. These were extracurricular activities, as in, they were generally all on a Monday night, 5:30. We did our best to bribe everybody with cookies and coffee when we could to come, come to share their opinions. So, we understand it was a time commitment, and we thank everybody for their, their opinions and perspectives. We would certainly not have been to this point and with this, this project without them. So, as you can tell right now, we're here in this February timeline where we are standing in front of you, in front of the commission, asking for your commission approval on the design. What happens next is a, is a prescribed hold, project hold period. This was born out of the funding sources, and I, I'll let somebody from the city that's a little bit smarter than me and answer any questions on that, on why that was, but I believe it was to generate some sales tax revenue so that we could actually pay for the construction. In May, June, July is when we will be formally going to the market and generating that guaranteed maximum price, and we will be back here in front of you all to, to present those final numbers. And then, what happens this fall is we move into the design completion, where Tracy and the team complete the design, and then we start into the actual construction processes, which is where we're onboarding our trade partners and begin the permitting, material procurement, where we're actually going out and buying materials, doing dirt work. And then, early in 2020 is when we're planning to break ground on these two facilities. And as it stands right now... And as it stands right now, the East facility, the Eisenhower, or, excuse me, Eisenhower facility would be first. This may be flexible. We may end up just with some site concerns. There's quite a bit of fill that needs to take place on the Anthony site, as the building's currently situated and designed, that may have an impact on which one of these projects go first. I do want to mention that we've been working pretty closely with USD 383 and paying attention to what's happening with the middle school additions. One thing that was brought to our attention was it was important to understand that connection and how the recreation centers would impact and flow through the middle schools to allow students to transfer back and forth. So that was of concern, that was, has been taken into consideration, and we feel that we've gotten that captured here. The design of the middle schools has not been established yet, so we're still waiting to see what that connection exactly will look like. McCallum Gordon is the contractor of choice for the middle schools, so we will be working closely with both projects to make sure that that is addressed adequately on both projects. That concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any other questions or concerns you all have.
I just have really a quick comment rather than a question before I forget. On the budget estimate summaries, you noticed in, you mentioned in the fixtures and art total, there's probably going to be budget there for signage. I brought this up last time, but I just want to reiterate again, because it seemed like signage was a low priority that the steering committee gave. I don't know what kind of signage that was referring to, but those buildings set pretty far back off of the road. And so if the only thing there is Eisenhower Community Center, and I realize that's just a placeholder, if I'm a new military family in town, I really don't understand how that indicates to me. I might not see that. I just want to make sure that with the transient population that we have, that it's very clear that this building is a community building that can be accessed. So I just want to reiterate that when we see the full budget, just a little bit more pieces of pie to make me feel better about that, because, yeah, seeing that it was placed such a low priority by the steering committee, kind of concerned me a little bit, because I want it to be something that everybody utilizes, not just the 30 to 40% of us who live here all the time.
Sure. Okay. Appreciate that.
All right. Well, thanks very much. Appreciate it. Well, let's, I know we've got some folks who've signed up to come speak to us tonight on this issue, so now we'll open to public comment. And I think, Thomas Carrigan, did you wish to speak on this first?
Tom Carrigan, 2125 Sloan Street. I've been here since about 1985. I'm a veteran, like some of you guys up there, and moved into Northview back in 1985, '86, somewhere around there. Planted a little bit of, you know, greenery there, and it's now 100-foot tall. And that's kind of what we're doing here. We're trying to get this to grow, and we want it to be like we just talked on, a community center, because I think that was the idea, was not just a rec center. So the Greater Northview team, we were adamant about the kitchen and the multipurpose. We were, you know, hoping that you guys would take a good, hard look at that, and we would encourage you to try to get as much of that so that the sense of community is really what comes out of all of this, as well as everything else that has already been presented. And I wanted to thank everybody that worked, because they did a great job, and it's been fun, and I hope to do more with these things and like to see that continue. And that's all I have.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. And Eileen Wang?
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Commissioner. My name is Eileen Wong, and I live on Blaker Drive in Northview, and I'm also a member of the Greater Northview Action Team. I moved here to Kansas three and a half years ago, and I want to say that I really support the plan that's been presented to you tonight, and I want to thank Tracy and the building design team, and Eddie, and Jason, and everyone who worked on this project. And all of us members of the Greater Northview Action Team were present at all the meetings for the plans, and we appreciate that they all listened to us. And, you know, for us, we really support the plan, and most especially the multipurpose room and the kitchen, the learning kitchen, that has the capacity to become a full kitchen. And we think those are important things, because the community center should serve everyone in the community, and that includes people who don't play sports, right, seniors, young people, so that they have a place where they can have a sense of community and do something together. And I'm a curator at the Beach Museum of Art, and as a visual arts professional, I really see firsthand the benefits of art and cultural programming. And I think with a multipurpose room and the kitchen that can become a full kitchen, you know, to hold classes for cooking, say, different kinds of ethnic foods, the opportunity to teach people how to make healthier food and then bring them together to share a meal, that's a cultural experience that is very important for people in the community. It's a place to build a sense of community, a sense of belonging for people who don't play sports, you know, very young kids or seniors, young mothers. And the multipurpose room, what we wanted, we asked in the plans, was also the capacity to have equipment, like a portable stage, and, you know, development of a sound system so that there could be performing arts programs, screenings of art films, a place for community discussion about social issues. I know that that is really important. In my field, working in this field and offering that kind of opportunity, interactions with art and cultural experiences really helps to broaden the mind and nourish health and well-being for people. And I think that this new community center, having that capacity, is very important. It will serve the community like it said it wants to be. So I wanted to say, you know, that I really support the plans for this. And I want to say lastly, that art is a tool of empowerment and a tool for nourishing democracy. And that is something that, you know, this community center can offer, especially to people who may be, I mean, I work at the Beach Museum, but, you know, for people in Northview, that's far if you don't have a car. Whereas the community center in Northview, that could be walkable for someone who maybe doesn't have a car. So it's important, you know, to give that opportunity to people. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Dominique Sanders?
My name is Dominique Sanders, and like Eileen and my fellow Greater Northview Action Team members, I live in the Northview community on Prairie Lee Place. I moved to Manhattan about 20 years ago and moved specifically to Northview in 2009 with my small family. We had a hope at that time that we were moving into a community that was more affordable and that would also have a greater sense of connectivity or community. There's been some barriers in that, in our years there, and one of those is specifically the lack of indoor public space, or I should say, there are public spaces, but neutral indoor public spaces, where residents like ourselves can come together and share ideas, experiences, interests, and much more. So in that vein, I wanted to take a moment to thank Tracy and some of the other design build and steering committee members, I know that Eddie and Jason are here as well, for listening to some of the needs and wants that we presented at some of these steering committee meetings, specifically related to the kitchen, or what's being called the learning kitchen, and the multipurpose room specifically. I think that, to the point that you made, Jared, when you asked the question and kind of prompted that in saying, with signage, it needs to be a space where people all in the whole community recognize it as a community space, not just a recreational center, right? So in that vein, I would like to ask that all of you support the design team's proposal for the Eisenhower Community Center with the inclusion of a kitchen, or the infrastructure for a larger kitchen and the multipurpose room space, so that, again, we can come together, have a space to come together as a community. Are there any questions? Good. Thank you.
Thank you. She may have departed.
Good evening. So I'm here tonight with my Flint Hills Wellness Coalition hat on. I work for the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition, which is an organization that's been around since about 2012. The coalition is a partnership of local agencies and individuals organized around specific local health challenges. Right now, some of those challenges include mental health, active transportation, access to services, and access to healthy foods. I'm really here tonight to speak in support of the recommendation of the steering committee, but really more so in support of the people from Northview who are speaking in support of the recommendation of the steering committee. So a couple of years ago, about a year and a half ago, the coalition got a grant from the Kansas Health Foundation as part of their Healthy Communities Initiative. And using those dollars, we've been working with residents, in this case in Northview, to improve public health among people in the community, but especially those folks who have the greatest number of barriers to achieving good health. And, you know, one indicator, one of the best indicators that we know of health is life expectancy. And that used to be a piece of data that was really hard to come by at anything smaller than a community level. But the Kansas Department of Health and Environment just recently, within the past few months, and along with the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, has now found some data or been able to get more granular. And we know across every county in the state of Kansas at the census tract level what the estimates of life expectancy are. And that includes Riley County. And so what I have here that I'm going to give you here in just a moment is that data. And one of the most alarming things to us in the coalition is the disparities between life expectancy in some places in Riley County versus others. And so if you look at the Northview neighborhood, which is really census tract two, life expectancy there is about 78 years with a fairly small margin of error. 78 is the national average. However, if you go three miles to the west side of town in what I believe is census tract three, that life expectancy goes up to about 86. And so that's a very curious difference in a very short amount of time, and there's lots of things that explain that difference, including the things that might jump in your mind right up front, you know, access to healthcare, you know, health behaviors and these sorts of things. But we also know from decades of public health research that it has lots of, it has lots to do with many other social and environmental factors, such as access to healthy foods, access to transportation, access to employment, among many other things. And when we think about the Northview area along with some of the other places in Riley County, there are such challenges there. And, you know, Tracy asked a question a little while ago, you know, what, you know, of the steering committee on day one, you know, what challenges might this community center, or at the time a rec center, might be able to address? And we know that Northview is one of the only food deserts, for example, in the community. And so when you take into account people's incomes and people's access to transportation and proximity to grocery stores, we can actually make a designation on what we call food deserts, where people have the lowest access to healthy foods. We also know that Northview is one of the least walkable neighborhoods in the city, if not the most. And, you know, you ask any, based on many conversations with Northview residents about what some of their major concerns are in Northview, it's really this feeling of being isolated from the rest of the community, and I think Dominique just spoke very eloquently about that. And so one of the things that appears to me is the opportunity that this community center that includes a multipurpose space and a kitchen does is offer an opportunity for residents of that neighborhood to address their own concerns over this space that they live in. And so I'm here tonight to support the recommendations that the steering committee is making to the commission, and also taking the perspective that the people who live in Northview are the experts on Northview and know what is needed there to improve health and to create a more connected neighborhood. With that said, I'll stop there and answer any questions that you have, and also drop some data off at your desk.
Yeah, if you'll just give those to City Clerk, he can provide those to us. Thanks, Brandon. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? All right, with that, whoop, are you moving? You gotta be quick.
Sorry, I'm not on the list. I hope it's okay that I add myself to it. I'm Nick Lander. I live at 2401 Timber Lane Drive, which is not in the Northview neighborhood. I am part of the steering committee. I'm a participant in park and rec activity. I'm a coach. I'm a parent of kids who participate, and very much appreciate the opportunity to be part of the steering committee. I would compliment the team and the constraints that were given in a variety of ways to try and meet the needs of 44 steering committee voices, as well as other members of the community who came to participate in those discussions. And so I just wanted to mention that, because I think that there might be a lot of views on what was put forward today and why did you do this versus this. And I do feel like in some ways, those constraints had to kind of guide that to some degree. And they did a good job of saying, these are the guidelines we were given, we're going to work within those guidelines. I do think that the advocacy from the folks from Northview, I very much appreciate. And I think that's one of the challenges with this particular project, is working within the constraints of the desire for these facilities to be identical, but realizing that the community needs within those areas might be different. And so I think as this project evolves, I'll be curious to see kind of how that may be addressed with those two facilities. And is there possibility to diversify the offerings in each of the two locations in order to better serve the residents of the Manhattan community as a whole? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? You can come on up, Ed, if you want, if you're ready. He's just signing.
Ed Klimak, member of the 44-member steering committee. It was the largest one I've ever been involved in. Ed also chair of the park board. And I want to, I do want to say that this process has worked very well. We've come up with an outstanding product, something that we can be very, very proud of. It's, one of the things I wanted to do is have this be multifunctional, and I think we've answered that question, because we can honor what might be needed in those buildings for the different activities because of the way we laid the building out. So those are all good. And Jared, I think your question about visibility from the mezzanine, I would have loved to seen visibility from both ends of the courts. I think those kinds of buildings, a lot of people will go up to that mezzanine to get away from all the action on the floor. Excellent viewing areas. I wish we could have viewing on both sides of the court, from both ends of the building. I think that would have been ideal. But be it as it is, I do want to mention one thing. I did have an opportunity to tour two rec center projects in Johnson County, also the new Field House project in downtown Salina, which is a very similar facility as ours. And I did get to interview the directors of each of those facilities. And one thing that, and I made this known in the meetings as well... And one thing that, and I made this known in the meetings as well, but the one thing that always came up in those meetings was the flooring of the facility. And the fact, if we want to attract basketball tournaments, which I understand the number one priority for this building would be for the community, but also there's a priority there to attract tournaments for economic development. And all three of those facilities, the directors told me, you gotta have wood floors if you're going to attract quality teams and quality tournaments. There are problems with wood floors, and I get that, but we're going to miss the opportunity to attract tournaments to our community. The kind of flooring that we have going in there now, we'll, we'll be fine with the young youth tournaments, probably more local-type tournaments. But if we really want to have attraction for these, these traveling teams, this may not satisfy it. So, I wanted that to be known. I, I do understand there's issues with that, and all three directors in those buildings told me, you're not going to like what you have to do to maintain those floors. But it's part of the program for those facilities, and it works well. Also, one other comment I'd like to say, in the Salina Field House, fifty percent of the building cost for that building were donated because of naming rights within the building. They have, they formed a foundation that went out and attracted businesses and individuals to donate to the project, and they would put their name on a basketball court or on part of the facility. Think about that. Fifty percent of that cost didn't cost the taxpayers money. It came from individuals and businesses. We need to look at that for possibility for these two indoor rec centers, also for the Douglas Center, because it needs some funding opportunities. And I think it's out there, if we look at ways to make a foundation, if you will, that would go out and approach businesses and individuals to support the facilities with naming rights. That could be the name of the building, could be the name on a basketball court, could be name of a volleyball section, whatever the case may be, but the opportunities do exist. And we should look at that and see if it really works for us as well. With that, thank you. It's a proud time for the city to have two great recreation centers.
Thanks very much, appreciate it. Thanks, Ed. Any further public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, for indulging. I'm Gail Urban. I live at sixteen twenty-seven Wyndham Heights, and I've lived in the community not quite twenty-one years. I have worked on this project for about ten years now, and I have to say, this is a proud moment. It's a proud moment that our community has worked together with the school district, with the city, with Parks and Rec, and with the business community. That, that will still unfold as we work with the CBB in developing what opportunities we do have to bring tournaments to our community. We haven't had that opportunity in the past. This isn't, this is a great example, though, of, we, we were so far behind in indoor space, particularly indoor space, that in this particular project, we have made every attempt to please all the people as many times as we can. This is just a first step, and I think these two facilities, along with the Douglas Center, will be quickly sucked up in our desire to have more. I hope that's the problem that we face, and we get to work on the next ones just as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Gail. Appreciate it. Appreciate your ten-year effort on this as well.
Yeah, I probably ought to be spending a little more time in the facilities, instead of working on them.
Anyone else, please? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public comment and ask if there's any further commission comment.
Yeah, I just quickly want to say thanks to the Steering Committee for all the work that you've done. What's been presented throughout this process has been honestly quite extraordinary, and I've been, I've been really impressed by it. Just a couple of comments on the general design. I actually like the fact that the secure, for security reasons, we are forced to put the office bill, office space in the middle. Believe it or not, a much lighter, more athletic version of Jared, used to play a lot of volleyball. And while, when I would walk into those gyms that were like four to six courts big, it was really impressive. The minute that you started playing, even if they had curtains, it became quite overwhelming. You didn't know if that was my whistle or someone else's whistle, and there was always distractions. So I actually think that that lends itself even better for having tournaments and having a, a number of people in those facilities at one time. So I think that the way that that turned out was excellent. If you could tell from my questions, reading through the packet, I had a little hesitation on the turf, but the value add on it, but it's not super expensive, and it's obviously something that the committee wanted. And the mezzanine, I just had some, some questions on. With that being said, with a seventeen million dollar project, the fact that I like ninety-eight percent of it, it's a pretty good sign. And, you know, I'm a member of the public too, I'm not going to get everything that I want either. So, overall, I think it's, it's excellent. The only concern that I have, and I'll say it one more time, is we have to make sure that we get signage in this budget, because if we don't, and it becomes a capital improvement project later, Lord knows, we won't fund it, because we don't fund capital improvements, we haven't for a while. So we have to make sure that it's included in this budget, and we get this done now. So, thank you for all the work that you've done, and I appreciate it very much, and I look forward to supporting this and seeing it come to life.
I too would like to thank the Steering Committee and those who have led the project, those who've come forth and spent evenings, Ed and the staff and the school district, just all of you. Tonight is kind of the reward for having a very positive and for, going-forward kind of project, where actually, this has worked better than most of the projects I've seen, where the public participates and is successful in, in getting those things that are important to them. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I'm very pleased with this result.
Okay, great project. It's, you know, it's on budget, and I think it covers everybody's needs. So on that note, I'm going to make the motion that we approve the middle school improvement Steering Committee's schematic design recommendation, and authorize the design build team to develop a guaranteed maximum price for construction of the Anthe and Eisenhower Middle Schools Recreation Centers, SP 1802.
Did you want to say anything there? Second.
Call of duty.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes?
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thanks, everybody. I really appreciate that. And again, as the Commissioners have remarked, this is a great coming together of the community for a common effort, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into that, so. We're now to Item D, which is a discussion item. This is the north campus corridor, streetscape landscaping budget, twenty nineteen projects, and the option to bury the West Star overhead power lines on College Avenue. Presenter will be Jason, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. We have quite a few presentations for you this evening. We're going to kick it off with PJ Anovic from Confluence. The larger sheets that are being passed around right now are K-State Athletics. Jeremy will be tackling those. The Confluence presentation was included in your packet. And I will introduce PJ and have him run through that. And as soon as PJ and Jeremy are done, I have a presentation as well, and then we'll proceed with discussion. So PJ, you.
Good evening, Mayor, and Commission members. It's good to be back. What I'm going to do tonight is go through, I believe we were back talking about this a little over a year ago, and what I want to do is just briefly go through tonight what has changed in the plan across the entire project, and please feel free to interrupt me as we're going through this. Now, Jason, that didn't give the phases, but... But that's all right. We, we can do it. Yeah, we, we had the, we had the, just breaking down the five phases.
There was a, yeah.
It's, we, we really don't need it.
The one on the end? Not that one.
Yeah, the, we, the one on the end is one before that.
This one?
Yeah, I'll hit it, I'll hit it then. Sorry for the preview. So starting, this is a, this is a slide of the north campus corridor. This is a landscape, landscape option, so we're on North College Avenue at this point. So the, at this, at this end, you see, overall, in talking with the university, and we're talking with the city, we came in and we reduced the canopy by about twenty-five percent. That's for, biggest concern is long-going maintenance, and years from now, can the, the city and the university keep up on those trees? So with that, we also, so along this portion, you see there's the consistent low landscape wall, and that would be against the athletic facilities there. And then we have the portions of landscape beds that are roughly eight foot by sixty foot within those areas through here. We have the trees placed on their staggered fifty-foot center, so on each side of the sidewalk. So I think that even with the reduction, it'll still get us a nice tree canopy as those trees mature. So that's been the, the biggest change on this portion. Our next slide is, as we look at the south, south end of college, and this is down by soccer and baseball with the existing fence. Again, what we've done here is we have kind of consolidated the trees you see here, so we're, they're a little, they're in pairs of twos, a little closer together, they're about, about a hundred feet apart. This gives the ability, it still has some tree cover, but it doesn't disturb, disrupt the view into the athletic facilities, which was one of the concerns from the university. And again, that's a thirty percent reduction in the tree canopy there. Now, as we move to the next, this is, this is Kimball, so we're on, we're at, at Kimball Avenue, as you can see through here. Overall, we've got a, a reduction of twenty-five percent tree canopy. This is the south side of Kimball, and you will see along the athletics portions, we've got that consistent stone wall, much reminiscent of the existing campus. Then we've got just some areas of landscape behind them to give a little green relief with that. And then as we come down, those trees are staggered on this side. We do have a few median trees, where we do have a median along Kimball proposed. And then as we jump to the north side of Kimball, you'll see, again, we're getting those pairs of trees, but on this side, we've actually cut down on the amount of stone wall in working with foundations. So we have, basically, we have a sixty-foot opening without the stone wall, then we have a forty-foot section, and that's consistent along. So that gives us, gives us enough of that element along the north side, so as you're driving down Kimball, you get the idea that you've, you've entered the, the university environment and, and the, and the north campus corridor. Then as we come down through here, this is, this is north Dennison, so we're up, you know, upcoming close to, upcoming close to Kimball. In through this area, you see, we've got this existing fence that we've got along student rec through here. We've got ornamental trees that are fifty-foot on center where we can, at the, towards, towards the very north end of Dennison, we do have a small median there, have a few trees in there. And then on the, what is the east side, again, we've got the staggered fifty-foot trees, and we're introducing some ornamental trees in through, in through this area. This is actually a twenty-five percent reduction in the amount of trees we had about a year ago, and we actually have about, it's about a sixty-six percent reduction of the perennials and native grasses within that median. So at one time, we had that entire median planted. The university is really pushing to have a moat edge to that, much, much easier to maintain that. So we still get, I think, that character that we're striving for throughout the project, but something that's a little, a little more reasonable maintenance-wise. Then here we are on South Dennison Avenue, so we're Jardine, the Jardine Complex is just off to the left, you can see the retaining walls here. Again, we've got the wider, the pedestrian, the ten-foot pedestrian walk here, that's that major north-south connector as you go from main campus up to the north. Then we've got the trees staggered fifty-foot on center. Then we've got trees on the other side, where we can get them, above on those walls. We've got pedestrian lighting, and we've also got the vehicular lighting along through here, and that's, in this area, that's a twenty-five percent reduction in the tree canopy. And then this is East Kimball, so as you're coming out, here is Kimball and Dennison. This is, this is where we start transitioning from, you know, the, as we're coming up the, up the hill onto, into campus, we've got a little more natural layout of those trees and the native grasses through there, then it starts transitioning down. We've got some large swaths of native grasses that then will transition down to the regular pairing of the street trees through here. We've got a twelve-foot sidewalk on this side, and then we've got an eight-foot sidewalk on this side. We've got vehicular lights through here. The intersection improvements have not changed from what we had before with that, so you can kind of see a view of what that, what that appearance will look like. Then here, this is North Manhattan, so at this point, we've got the sidewalk just on the university side of North Manhattan. We do have some facility signs coming in at, at the research park where we can, as you know, there's quite a bit of grade coming, coming up or down the hill, whichever way you're going. So we've got sections of walls, so those sections of walls are going to be anywhere from about thirty to forty feet, but they're going to step down the hill as it comes down. So we still get that, that element, that edge of campus that we're trying to identify, but we're not, you know, putting a whole wall down that side, so as you can kind of see, there's some of those sections through here. Again, we've got some pedestrian and vehicular lighting across that, and this again, also on the university side of North Manhattan, twenty-five percent tree reduction in the, in the canopy with that.
When you're talking about fencing there, is this the same fencing we're going to use over on Dennison? That's the limestone pillar with wrought iron in between, or?
No, that's, all we have here, Mayor, is a low, are the low walls, there won't be any fencing there. Where we do, where we do have fencing, we've got some existing fencing that we've got along athletics, and then when we do come in, we've got some other locations where we'll be replicating that same fencing in future phases, just so we have that consistent element. And then we've got, you know, there's, there's still two stadium drop-off, bus drop-offs. This is the one that will be by, by baseball and soccer, so this is, you know, this is on, on, not, I'm sorry, on, on the, on the right side of col, on the, on the east side of college. It holds four buses, you see through here, so this is the portions of the existing fence. We're then picking that up and wrapping it around the back, so we can control access to those facilities. And then here, we've got a low seawall, so people waiting for, waiting for a bus, or waiting for friends to show up on the next bus, have an opportunity to sit. There's some signage, as you can see here, so this is vehicular directional signage, so you know, if you're, if it's, if it's a game day, you know which way you're going. If it's a, if it's a normal in the future when buses are bringing students here to park, then you know, you know, which way you're going. So those are designed to be read from the street level. We've got light poles, we've got bollards, and we've got a couple of different textural differences and color difference in the paving landscaping behind that, so nice, nice pleasant space. Again, we also have another one of these when we get up to Kimball in a future phase. And then the issue tonight is about the overhead power lines. The overhead power lines, I, I think we're, we're approaching that from a practicality standpoint. When we first started the design, we were working on aerial photography, we didn't have all this great information the survey gave us. But this is a rendering that shows the, the specific improvements. This is one of the, the mid-sized gateway elements, so this is down by soccer. The idea, this is where the existing poles would be, should the design go forth. So that's, those are the existing utility poles that will be within there. As you can see, it runs right on top. Probably, if we look at the next slide, we've taken those out, so that's what you would see with there. I think, you know, there's so much utilities going on through here. We've got stormwater underneath, we've got a water line that has to move, we've got overhead utilities, so it's really, it's just about every utility we can have in a very narrow right-of-way is happening here. But you can see what that does aesthetically for that. And not only that, but, you know, we've all seen, I think Jeremy's going to touch on this, we've all seen around, around, you know, campus, around the city, when utilities companies come in and address the tree canopy around the power lines, and it can be some, if we're going to spend this money on trying to develop this tree canopy, we'd hate to see that start happening in ten years as tho, as those trees grow up. As you can see here, this is, so we are on college, we're looking to the southeast, so there's the stadium behind, so here it is. You can see the utility overhead power lines running through here. Again, give it five, ten years, those trees are going to be going right into there, and then they're just going to most likely get decimated from a canopy standpoint. So here's a view without those, really improves that quite a bit. We get to keep those trees, so, you know, twenty years from now, thirty years from now, there's going to be a nice green edge to that. And here's another, another shot of the power lines here on the south at the drop-off, and this is actually reversed, I thought we had it there, so there they are here. And there they are without. So that gives you an idea of what we're trying to do with this. Starts with phasing goes, we're talking about right now, we're working on Phase One, which is college in the intersection here, this first portion of Kimball, and then this portion of North Manhattan. Phase Two is this portion of Kimball, and then the second portion of North Manhattan. Phase Three is coming up from North Manhattan, Kimball over to Dennison. Phase Four is the northern half of Dennison, and the final phase is the roundabout at Jardine. And as far as the cost for the, this is the streetscape elements, this is not included... And as far as the cost for the, this is the streetscape elements, this does not include the roadway improvements and utilities, phase one is a total of $4.297 million, phase two is $4.873 million, phase three is $1.3 million, phase four is $3.182 million, and then phase five is $384, and that's just the, you know, the walls, the entry monuments, the lighting, the landscaping within those, all the, all the corridor is going to be irrigated, so that's all included in there, so a total budget for the entire quarter of the five phases of a little over $14 million. Do you have any questions on that? I know Jeremy's going to add some additional thoughts.
I have one question, you probably don't know the answer, maybe you've even thought about it.
I can take it.
But, the bus area on College Avenue, where you pull off, how do you prevent that from being just an absolute nightmare during game days?
Well, it's a lot, Jeremy could probably answer that better than I, but there's going, there'll be folks there directing the buses in and out, making sure that, stopping traffic, so as, as the buses either pulling in or leaving, that they can, you know, cue the traffic to stop, let the bus pull out and go on its way, it's a matter of, you know, game day functions with that.
Because tonight is just College Avenue and burying electrical. How many other streets in this corridor have that issue?
Well, we have some, we've accounted for it on, on, on Kimball, on the other portions, really, the, these are probably, the, those areas are probably the worst culprits as far as just the amount of overhead power drops that are there, and seem to be where we're most concerned.
Just real quick, Commissioner, north Manhattan does offer an opportunity to go underground, West Star, in the next, we hope, two to three years, will actually take a load off of those overhead lines and make that bury much cheaper, if we can wait until they're ready to downsize those electric lines.
On north Manhattan Avenue only, not on college?
Correct. North Manhattan is the opportunity to, if we give it some time, and possibly even sleeve it, entrench it, and get it done when we construct the, the wall or some of the other landscaping features, streetscape, moving what they leave behind underground could be a lot more affordable, and that's an option we'll have in front of you down the road too.
I'd be willing to wait a long time for 2 million.
Yeah, this one, and, and Matthew calls with BG's here too, we, this right of way is extremely busy, and it's a challenge not only to us, but to the university with their 15 million in soccer and baseball, to navigate this area, and he's, he's welcome to chime in here too.
Yeah, my assumption is that if we wait till we get all the underground done, pave, and then tear it up, it's not 2 million anymore.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate that we really do have limited right of way here with the, with the wide roadways, wide sidewalks, landscaping, the trees, knee walls, we are relocating an existing 10 inch water line on the east side of College Avenue, moving it to actually underneath the roadway, just because there's not, not much space for everything, and having those power poles in there.
I think one, one thing you'll notice too, there'll, there'll no longer be any surface drainage location, or just putting that all underground and getting rid of all of that, especially as we move, you know, we, especially when you get up to the, what would be the south, southeast corner of Kimball and, and college, and then all the way to the other sides, all that's being captured and being put underground.
Where will the West Star maybe transmission lines or lines come from that are going to be buried along college? Are they existing lines, or are they build, bringing those huge ones like from, that they've come off of that energy farm north of Kimball? Where are these lot, where's the power coming from?
They exist now.
They exist now.
It's the existing line, so basically what our southern limit would be?
It's pretty close to Dickens Avenue would be the southern limit.
Everything will come, everything will come down off the poles, go underground and head north.
Kind of like we did on Anderson, where we crossed the street from Pebblebrook, they go underground right there, and then they surface again, kind of on the northwest side of that roundabout intersection.
So this property owned by K-State will have, will be the location where these overhead come down into the ground, all of this, obviously, within, you can see they have a box here as well, we've talked about relocating that potentially to this side as, of the entry, that would give that entry monument that PJ pointed out, an opportunity to exist, these poles obviously would move, but everything you see in existence would then go underground, but as I mentioned, a box and other infrastructure for West Star would be located in this area. Then as you come down the corridor, all the overhead, you do have some connection points that come over here, we'll have to address as well, there's some streetlights that come off these power poles too, that will have to be addressed, but they are fully aware of the issues that surround this, K-State actually desires some of this, I don't know if I can go up there or not, but some of these overhead lines that are in what refer to as cat town, this is all K-State, this wouldn't be us, but they desire that to be buried as well in the near future, as part of their renovations, some of their master plans have some buildings there, so they would have to do that at some point. But yeah, as we continue then north, all the way to Kimball, I do believe the, the scope of this not only gets to the intersection, but we go a little bit to the west and a little bit to the east in order for, when we do get to Kimball and move further east with the burial of these, it's ready.
Are there power lines on Kimball now also?
Correct, yep.
And will they, are they expecting them to be buried too?
And they are in our estimates today.
They are, alright.
That was included, that was from the get-go, even back to three, four years ago, very much an emphasis.
When we first started talking about it.
Yes, a lot of discussion.
Because the emphasis then was on Kimball.
It was.
And the aesthetics there.
Correct.
This is kind of an additional.
And I'll point out some budget related items a little bit later, but the, and I want to give Jeremy an opportunity as well, to kind of speak from athletics before we kind of wrap it up.
So first off, my name is Jeremy Nader, I'm a senior associate athletics director for K-State Athletics, I'm in charge of facility and capital projects, and I'd like to thank Jason, his staff, BG, the university, the foundation, Confluence, great partnership, great team effort through this entire process, going out and getting everybody's opinions, and coming back forth and executing an amazing plan, so what I'm going to talk about today is just relocating the, the power poles, I took BG's aerial and, and some of their concepts related to the plan, and, and took it a little bit further, and what I'm going to be talking about is essentially all the power lines along college, and how they kind of impact our structure, logistically, the tens of thousands of fans, tens of thousands of fans that walk down the sidewalks, how it impacts them, and really, we're going to start here at the Kimball and college intersection, and then we're going to head south along college, and we're going to look at four different sheets, you guys feel free to ask me any questions as we go along here. Sorry, guys. Try to get a little closer here, you guys seem some notes, so essentially what I did is I took the aerial and outlined the current pole locations, so what you're seeing is the black circles are indicating the actual poles, and the, the black lines are indicating the overhead lines that go through the poles, so at the intersection, right now, we have a, currently, we have a pole inside the monument sign area, both on the, the north side and the south side of Kimball, as we head south, you're going to see, in the middle of this sidewalk, we have a pole centered in the center of the sidewalk, some of the pictures here just indicate current electrical poles, and right here is one of the new monument signs, you can see you have a pole to the, in that monument, monument area, and then you have a new sidewalk that's proposed, that actually goes right through the intersection of the pole itself, the picture to the right represents some of the trees along college, as you can see, when, when the trees grow, they get into the, the, the power lines, the utility contractor will come out and tree, and they kind of take no, no prisoners, I guess, and they just trim what they will to get the, get the lines cleared, so this is what I guess some of our main concern is, is, is really addressing the tens of thousands of fans that walk along the sidewalks to the games, for our football games, our basketball games, our baseball games, our soccer stadium, right, that's going to hold eventually the volleyball games, when we relocate our volleyball facility over there, but these pants, these fans will be impacted by the, the current poles if we leave them in place, right? So there's, there's really two different options, there's relocating the existing poles outside that footprint, or there's doing a direct bury, relocating outside that footprint, I think we still have a tree issue, we still have a, an easement issue, we still have existing utility conflicts, there's, there's a lot of different issues with that, so making the, making the recommendation to go direct bury with all the lines and kind of get rid of all these issues at once, we're going to head, sorry here, guys, we're going to head south into the second slide here. And what, and PJ kind of hit on this, but he showed an image of the, of the existing trees, right, so, or sorry, of the proposed trees along college, so these trees are all, if we leave those lines in place, are all going to be impacted by those lines, and the, the investment that everybody in this room is putting into this project with the new greenery along that is going to be impacted by the utility contractor at some point in time as they grow. And then, and then as we head south, we're kind of, this is along the west parking lot along college, we have another pole inside the, the sidewalk, another two poles, and then we get to Jack Hartman driving on the side, on the other side, on the south side, we have the same issue. One of the reasons we're kind of growing into that area is, we requested as a part of this project to grow that sidewalk to a 10 foot sidewalk, as everybody attends games, you kind of see a lot of the foot traffic that walks down college, we have a four to five foot sidewalk directly adjacent to baseball and soccer, and a lot of that traffic, with young kids in mind, walk, walk parallel to 30 mile an hour traffic, there's no guardrail, you're walking right off the curb, so what we wanted to do is, is push that sidewalk far away from that college, put a little green space, and then create a 10 foot sidewalk, and so that's how we're getting into some of these power poles, by pushing that, that walkway back and getting that, getting those pedestrians away from that traffic. Getting into the west side of baseball, they talked about the new bus lane, currently, right now, we have a pole located inside the bus lane, at the exiting point of the, the bus lane, and then about 200 feet down, we have another pole in the sidewalk, another 75 foot down, in the new plaza for the baseball area, you'll have another power pole, where people be gathering, getting tickets for events, it's just a gathering space where, where people be conflicted by another power pole. I think, Jared, you had asked about the bus lane, I think it's a good time to address it, but right now, at our events, we have so many people pulling up and just stopping directly on college, and they drop people off, so that's, that's the reason for the bus lane, so people could actually pull off where they're not stopping traffic, potentially getting rear ended by another vehicle, right, while they're stopping that intersection, we, we employ roughly around 125 event staff and police, so seven times a year, when 55,000 people come, I think we could help mitigate that issue if we need to, just to help, help with that problem. Moving further south, I, I, I cropped like just an image of, of PJ's plan, this is the old one, that didn't have the 25% reduction in trees, but those trees are going along the sidewalk, college, at that same intersection, so I just want you guys to picture those trees all the way down college, right, and then the two pictures up above, you know, just represent another element of what trees can look like around power lines, right, so as we make this great investment, this is what we don't want to see five to 10 years now as they grow up. Again, here's another power pole with that 10 foot sidewalk that's just centered, and, and two more down to the south, and then additionally, you know, I just, I cropped and had a couple of image of poles in sidewalks, right, so what we're trying to prevent is people pushing themselves or walking against this traffic, 30 mile an hour traffic, by widening the sidewalk and getting away, but as we put people heading down this, this sidewalk, what they're going to do is walk around that pole, right, so they're going to walk around that pole, and they could walk into the street or off the sidewalk, so again, we're just trying to relocate those all together so we don't have the issue, and the other example is just essentially, you know, it's not only the power pole we're thinking about, it's all the conduit associated with, with the lines, the circular, you know, this is really technical, and I'm getting in the weeds here, but all the concrete cracking that occurs with circular in, in the sidewalks, it, it's just, it's kind of a, a, a plan for disaster, but one thing I didn't talk about in this phase also is, not only do we have power lines, right, we have these existing AT&amp;T Cox lines that are, that have a separate, a certain distance of separation that hang lower, right, so right now, our bus lane will be impacted by some of these lower lines, so in the event, we're going to have to touch these no matter what, right, whether we relocate them, whether we, we change the AT&amp;T lines, we're going to have to touch these, right, and so I just think right now, we make the investment to go underground, right, because it impacts our fans, the bus lanes, the sidewalks, I think now is just the time to do that, and Mayor Dodson had, had mentioned that earlier, is it's always more expensive to do it after the fact, right, and, and I've learned, I've learned that sometimes the hard way too myself, right, because we don't have the, the funding initially, but I think this is just one thing that we need to find the funding for and try to push it, push it forward, so. You guys got any questions for me?
I have a question for Katie, do, do the cable and cell towers, and do they, are the rules the same on the campus, they can just come and put a pole wherever they want to, as they, as it affects us as a city and our rights of way?
Within the rights of way along the campus, to the extent those rights of way are owned by the city of Manhattan, then the rules that apply anywhere else would apply there, Kansas State property that is not in the right of way, that's, the K-State has agreements with the wireless companies for facilities on their property, that's not within the rights of way. Same, same, but, I mean, sorry, I mean, I, they're all the same, the utilities work with, with K-State, the rights of way along the street that is in our control would be subject to our franchise agreements, regardless of its telecom or other utilities.
I know Mr. Ott is watching us, and I'm going to put a smile on his face, because I have to run through a couple of his slides for you, but I just wanted to remind you of where we are by way of activity, we've obviously completed a segment on Dennison and Marlet, and right now, we are in phase six, and what's been redesigned here along north Manhattan as areas to focus on for our design, so our 19 activity is primarily focused on those areas, I'll, I'll stop there on his presentation and hop into what I put together for this evening, but appreciate all our staff's time and effort on this, and Jeremy alluded to it, we, we have been meeting with K-State, Confluence, BG, and when I say K-State, it's athletics, the foundation, and the university, all coming together, we've revised some numbers, we, we've included additional contingency in design, so the numbers you're seeing are going to change almost every time we're in front of you, when we're talking about 45 million, or now we're down to 41, or bouncing around back to 43 with this, but every time we're in front of you, we, we definitely But every time we're in front of you, we definitely want to give you an update. So right now, curb to curb on this Kimball and College project, we're about 5.2 million for an estimate. Brian anticipates bidding this out this summer, and we'd like to get started by August, September timeframe. The back of curb, so the street scrape, landscaping, lighting, everything within the right of way, has that total estimate of about 4.3 million. And again, I just, I mentioned the contingency, design and construction, because we're trying to be as comprehensive with these numbers as we can. Our meetings have been good. The reductions, a lot of them primarily based on maintenance and the future of taking care of all of this and letting our trees mature over time. And reaching a point where one of our speakers tonight talked about several years ago planting a tree and now it's 100 foot tall. There is the species that we're talking about here. We're talking about large trees that will provide a lot of shade and a lot of canopy for our streets. You drive down some of the older streets in town and you feel that canopy. And the university has it along North Manhattan, and we want to create that, extend it along North Manhattan, College and Kimball. So you've seen that. And their total costs have come down from 26 million to 18.2 million with that revised number. So I've prepared a couple of different budget scenarios for you, looking at revenues from City University, KDOT, Star Athletic, City at Large. And we're looking at a $41.7 million budget, and the percentages then run through. If we grow that to 43.7 and include these power lines, then again, these percentages kind of find their way into the project corresponding to each source. You can see our City at Large grows by a couple million. But when you look at the City University and the athletics side of this thing, I want to highlight that in terms of how we approach this area. Jeremy didn't show these, these are on their website. They show a very clean product, it's one that's not encumbered by power lines. And you can see just how close these sidewalks will be to these structures. And they'll literally be, I think 18 feet is what they told us, between the edge of this building and these fences. And that will have those lines in there if we leave them. So we've come to you all to talk about the 2 million. We know that street pallet grows if they're buried. We know if they're left overhead, we're talking about trees that don't get any taller than 12 feet, or as Jeremy described, it's kind of that crotch cut that you get to let the lines go through. We have a number of those circumstances in the community, they're not the most appealing. The university and athletics, when you look at what those two funding sources are providing, overall, they're about 30% of the total funding of about the 41 million, 43 million. But if you just look at landscaping and streetscape of the 18, they're 71% of that funding source. If we take the 2 million and add it to the 20, they become 64% of that funding source. When we approached this project, we recognized the curb to curb was necessary for the community. It's necessary to move traffic, it's necessary to provide the safety enhancements at the intersections for our pedestrians, it's necessary to create the turn lane so we don't have rear-end accidents on Kimball. We knew going in, that was a $20 million commitment by the city, if we didn't get Star, if we didn't get Build, and all we had was 10 million from City University, we would more than likely would work towards a $30 million project. Because curb to curb, we knew, much like we found on West Anderson, and that's 6.5 million, and Miller Parkway connection, and that 5 million, that there are certain improvements we just have to make in the community. And those projects are large and they're tough to swallow. I feel fortunate to at least have partners here that are contributing to our total. If we can leverage 77% from someone, from another source to build a $41 million project, we're usually jumping at that. And in this case, it's 74% by burying the lines. You know, a KDOT grant or even a DOT grant, if we can get 75%, we usually jump at that. I just bring it up because tonight, you heard the preference, you know the desires. I just wanted to look at it beyond curb to curb. Those road improvements we know we need to make to accommodate the growth and look at the streetscape and the landscaping purely from that perspective. Coming down from 26 to 18 was a big step. And we got there really by that input from the university. Now we're at a position where we can definitely make a corridor look a lot better and function a lot easier from a infrastructure standpoint and rely on our partners to help us pay for that. So we'd be happy to answer any questions this evening. We are just looking for direction and feedback, no motion necessary, but we need to give some direction to our consultants so they can finalize that design.
Is it possible?
I'm all for the idea of putting them underground. And I think you've got a good budget handle on it, and if we sequence it right, that's the right way to go.
Thanks.
Is it possible to put some of the lines underground?
It is.
And not all of them? I don't, I don't even know what I'm asking.
Sure.
I'm just trying to...
West AR will take it block by block, they'll do...
I'm having a hard time swallowing the 2 million.
Understood, understood. I think, and that's where we kind of tried to lean on athletics contribution, the City University's contribution, is kind of the justification to go there. But I certainly understand what you're saying, and West AR can give us estimates for just however long we want to go.
Especially the part there by soccer and baseball, and even at the intersections. I mean, like the north intersection there, I'd like for you to at least explore that.
Sure.
It's not going to be wonderful. I hate those kinds of tree issues also as...
Yeah. And that may be an alternate we can look at in the bid package to kind of see if there's a whole lot of cost savings or difference between those two.
Other than obviously the aesthetic improvements that it would make, does burying lines, sorry if this is a dumb question, does burying lines lend itself to uptime improvements, safety improvements? Are there improvements from putting those lines underground other than just aesthetics? And not having a pole in the middle of a sidewalk that someone has to walk around?
The infrastructure issues we are going to face in this area are extremely tight, and I'll let others comment as well. But we know, and it's been mentioned, there's a water line that needs to be relocated. The area from the curb to the property line where construction and development is going, it's very narrow. So if we put it below, we got more room at the surface to do things that are more pedestrian-friendly and more really safe for the environment. We have found, even in areas like downtown, we have boxes in the middle of sidewalk paths that have to go around them, and were unavoidable. But at the time, it sure pained us to do it because we didn't want them there. People have to break their line of sight and go around them. We were able to accommodate it, but in this case, I think the poles do pose some safety issues as well.
Yeah, I think there's two different scenarios we look at. The safety risk during construction. So when you're constructing all this infrastructure, your storm drains, your excavation equipment, everything, let's think about during construction. You have excavators hoisting, storm manholes, cranes, right? You've got scrapers, dump trucks hauling a bunch of dirt into a soil that's going to get filled. They're all going to be navigating around existing poles, right? So they're going to be hoisting around. We picked our west side third base light today. We put new LEDs at the baseball stadium, we did that pick today. We had about a 20-foot window between our facility and these overhead power lines to pick about 140-foot pole. That's tough. I mean, just building around these lines, the daily maintenance of changing LEDs at our baseball complex to have a crane pick over power poles, right? We talked about our new volleyball complex, we're going to look at in the future with Jack Hartman Drive relocating that because we're going to have the same issues when we build that new facility and those power lines, right? Working around them or doing daily maintenance around them. There's a lot of safety issues with these lines.
I would assume though burying them makes it more expensive to maintain them, correct?
For a West AR?
For a West AR, yeah.
Yeah, they're, you know, they like the visibility and the accessibility of overhead. They're not opposed to burying, there's just a cost associated with it. They've come up with equipment and their own process, and I don't know, Brian, if you want to chime in here, if you know any better from them, but they haven't expressed any negative towards going underground. Have they talked about any positives that you can recall?
Really, the only positive is weather. You know, you don't get those ice storms, those wind storms. You're underground, so you're protected, but Jason's right, you know, that, the accessibility when it's up and above and they can get a bucket truck out there and fix it, they like that, they really do.
So if I'm building, if I'm a developer and I'm building a brand-new development, a dense development, is the preference to bury the lines? Okay, then bury the lines.
West AR requires all new subdivisions, all new developments to be underground today.
Their ordinance requires.
Then yeah, that's my answer.
Is there, you're talking about burying water lines and burying electrical lines. Is there any economy to be gained? I, you know, I know they don't, water and electricity don't go together very well, but is there an economy to be gained?
Matthew kind of talked about, we may have to come out into the street with that water line relocation, which would free up a little room to go below grade for the electrical. We're going to have to negotiate with West AR on just exactly where this goes. They typically require a 10-foot easement to go below grade, and there's not a lot of room there to do that. So we're going to be working with the university, the city, and West AR to figure out just what the underground plan will be. But more than likely, we'd be looking at a trenching contract as soon as we possibly could, and a West AR contract to get this going so we can meet some timelines for the university.
And with the project, we're going to bury some conduit for our traffic operations. So there could be some economies of scale there with stuff that we're going to be doing to interconnect some of our signalization.
I do think there's a safety issue with the public along college being so close to the traffic. I would support, certainly support that.
Anyone? I don't see too many in the public at Lyndon and Kent. Any comments on this at all?
I would just say it's, the cabinet has talked about this, and of course, our foundation partners in working with athletics, you know, we realize, you know, this is, it is an expense, but we feel like it's an expense that is well worth moving forward with it just for the long-term effects of the safety for people in not having a pole in the middle of a sidewalk. Again, with the trees, we do the canopying and you don't have that issue with utilities having to come in and chop up the trees. And it does, you know, tie in with the overall aesthetics of that area, which we think will be very welcoming for, you know, visitors that come to Manhattan and attend the sporting events. We do have a lot of people traffic in there. So burying as much of this and doing it now versus trying to do it later, we feel it's much more economical to do it. We all agree, we wish it had been in the original plan and could have budgeted for it that way, but it's better to catch it now and the university supports moving forward with this and trying to figure out how we can help make it happen.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just, for my two cents, you know, if I had my way, we wouldn't have any overhead power lines. My last experience was in the Washington DC area, and some of those old neighborhoods, when you get the ice storm and the heavy snow, everybody's power goes out. And by everybody, I mean people who live in very expensive houses. But up there in those narrow roads to put power lines underground is about a million dollars for, I think it's a half a block. So it's much more expensive than we're faced. So the only other question I had, Jason, was on the Star Bond. That 15 million, that's the part that used to be 25, so we've already cut that 10 million out, or is this a different?
This budget just is about infrastructure. That 10 million would be dedicated towards the facility and its grounds.
So it's an honest 41?
It is.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other discussion? Got, yeah, you have what you need? Okay. All right. Seeing that it's 10:26, we'll adjourn, and thanks, everybody, I appreciate all the discussion.